Good afternoon and welcome to today's city council meeting. Our meetings are public and you are welcome to join us in person or by watching from the council's agenda page on Zoom, Facebook, YouTube, or SLC TV. We hope you'll continue to join us in whichever manner you feel most comfortable. Today is a work session meeting during which there is no public comment.
All right, one moment, they can't hear us on Zoom.
Okay. So you are not welcome to join on Zoom yet. I texted him, I don't know.
This isn't the most updated out result of shoes yet. The timestamp at the top, just in case that helps you keep track of which versions we're dealing with.
Testing, can anyone on Zoom hear? Testing, can anyone on Zoom hear us? I think they can now. Got it?
They have hold music or something playing in here.
Okay, it looks like they can hear us now.
All right, well, I will proceed. Today is a work session meeting during which there's no public comment, but our next opportunity for public comment will be on June 6th during our 7:00 PM formal meeting. You are, the public is also always welcome to send feedback anytime by mail at PO Box 145476, Salt Lake City, Utah, 84114, or by email at council comments at slcgov.com, or you can call our 24-hour phone comment line, 801-535-7654. Any written comments received by the council office on agenda-related topics are shared with all council members and posted to the website, slcouncil.com. And so now we will begin our work session. The first item on the work session is item one, the fiscal year 2023-24 budget for the Salt Lake City Fire Department. We have Jennifer Bruno, Deputy Director of the Council Office, I see Chief Lieb, and who else do you have with you, Chief Lieb?
Council Chair, I have my two Assistant Chiefs, Chief Mill and Chief Fox, and then my Community Health Access Team Manager, Natasha Thomas.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, I'll just give a brief introduction and then I'll turn it over to the department. The proposed budget for fiscal year 24 can be found, for the Fire Department can be found on pages 196 to 200 of the budget book. The proposed budget increases the Fire Department by about 7.6%, which is about $3.7 million. Most of the increase is due to staffing. However, of that staffing, five are proposed to be at the airport, which is fully reimbursable by the Airport Fund. The proposed budget is adding a medical response team at the airport. Within the General Fund, the expansion is for the Community Health Access Team, the CHAT team. There's four employees proposed to be added to that, as well as one fire captain to assist with the medical response team, of which there are now several across the city. With that, I'll turn it over to the Chief.
Thank you, Jennifer, I appreciate that. We can go to the next slide. And another, please. So Council, I'll just give you a general overview of our budget with this slide. Our ongoing expenses are $651,225. Our one-time expenses, $179,500. And that makes our total fiscal year 2024 budget request of $830,725. As Jennifer stated, our new fiscal year 2024 FTEs proposed is five. In addition, we have five additional FTEs for the airport, which are budget neutral. We have five insights in our budget proposal for fiscal year 2024. Next slide, please. Our first insight is directly related to the Community Health Access Team, so I wanted to give the council a little bit of background on what we've seen over the first six months of operations. We are currently into our ninth month, June 1st, of our pilot program. And as a reminder, we have three social workers in the Fire Department right now. Two in the field, then we have one social work manager, Natasha, who sits behind me. What you see here are the metrics that we are using as a fundamental baseline for the operation. So we've had 270 total responses for the Community Health Access Team, or CHAT. We've had 357 crew referrals, which means the team did not actually respond to the scene, they were either unavailable or couldn't get there. But the crews have given, provided the CHAT team these names of people that may benefit from CHAT intervention. We have 135 cases where we have avoided emergency department transport. So that's avoiding, that's getting these patients the appropriate care and service that they need, rather than sending them to the emergency room, which isn't ideal for any non-life-threatening situation. And sometimes we end up seeing that same patient within the next 24 hours. We have 143 instances where we canceled the Police Department, where police intervention simply was not necessary, but oftentimes they are on-scene, so we've been able to cancel them that many times. And lastly, we have 91 instances where we did not need a Fire Department truck or an engine. That's what we call a heavy, heavy apparatus. And we can put, we can actually put a cost to how often, or what that amounts to, 91 calls where a heavy apparatus is not needed, and that is upwards of $90,000 just in this case, because our hourly rate for four firefighters and one apparatus is almost $1,000 an hour. Lastly, one of our metrics, you'll see in the box to the right of the slide, indicates how often CHAT was unavailable to respond. And this is what we're finding to be our biggest challenge right now after the first eight months, that we simply have too many responses, too many calls, too many referrals, too many opportunities to provide this service, and not enough personnel. So if you look at the box, it frankly just says that we've been unable to respond to 239, which is approximately 72% of 334 calls involving a psychiatric patient or substance abuse issue. And I think that speaks volumes to where we currently are. This, this program is being utilized, it's being, it's being used by the firefighters, it's being accepted throughout the city on this department, and we just need more personnel to make it go, because we have a need, and this is certainly filling that niche. Next slide, please. This leads us to our first insight, Community Health Access Team additions. We gave it a City Matrix score of 30 and Moscow score of must. The request total is 398,667, this amounts to four social workers, funding for 10 months. We assume it's going to take us at least eight weeks to locate social workers and hire them. Thus the 10 months. Next slide, please. Insight number two, ongoing expense items. We scored this a 28 on the Budget Matrix, and on the Moscow, it's also a must. This is simply additional budget to address contractual and inflationary increases. These are things such as utilities, contracts with technology, cell phones, things like that, just really the cost of doing business, and this amounts to $186,606. Next insight, please. Our third insight is our fifth FTE, coming directly from the Fire Department budget. It is one fire captain, funding for six months. This individual will be directly responsible for the medical response teams that we're seeing throughout Salt Lake City now. That's two firefighters on an SUV, they respond to the more lower acuity calls, of which we have a lot. So at this point, we need someone to manage those MRTs throughout the city. We have three of them now. We've one at Station, Station 5, we have one at Station 6 on the west side of the city, and we have one in Sugar House at Station 3. And ideally, I see a fourth one in the northwest quadrant of the city soon enough. This request total is 131,452. Next slide, please. Our fourth insight is life safety items. We scored this a 22 on the City Budget Matrix, and a Moscow score of must. This is SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus, hydrostatic testing, these bottles need to be tested every five years. We have a new batch of bottles that are coming up on their five-year mark right now, so we need the funds to make sure that they're operating properly. We also included in this an SCBA compressor replacement. That ultimately fills the bottle, so the bottles are prepared for the firefighters to dawn and move into an atmosphere that's certainly hazardous. So this request is 114,000. Next slide, please. Our last insight, as I referred to earlier, is revenue cost-neutral items for five ARF full-time employees, ARF Aircraft Rescue Firefighters. This is for the airport, this is cost-neutral at an amount of 764,666. Next slide. Thank you, this is a summary of our Fire Department Insights, all five that I just discussed, and that wraps up our budget presentation of Mayor Menintal's recommended fiscal year 24 budget for the Fire Department. Next slide is just questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Lieb. So the 800, can we go back to that last slide? 83725, that is the total of all the new items, both one-time and ongoing.
Yes, that's a total budget request, Councilmember.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have questions?
For Jennifer, Chief Lieb?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, we're asking for four CHAT team members and the chief to get that fully back to 72% that are not being, or being able to handle because of staffing. Would you need an additional four after that, or would it be, is there some type of balance there between when they're being, you can't handle the calls weekends or different chiefs at night, because you're only working at days, right?
Yeah, it's a fair, fair question, Councilmember. This would be a good number for us, it would bring our total to seven CHAT personnel specifically. It would allow us to put two, two social workers on the east side of the city, at Station 5 where they are right now, by the whale, that's Station 5 in case someone, and then we would also be able to put two social workers Monday through Saturday on the west side at Station 6, which is by the Smiths on Indiana Avenue and 9th West. Also, we'd have two in the Public Safety Building that are handling the referrals that we're getting, because we're getting a lot of referrals from the crews, because CHAT's unavailable to get to their scene. So this would put us, we think it's a good number. I cannot say, Councilmember, that it would be the end-all, or this would be it, because the program is, in eight months, this program has developed to a point much more functional than we even anticipated. And the firefighters are utilizing it, and they want these resources to be available. And when I'm, for instance, I'm in my car on the radio listening to calls, I hear a lot of crews on scene saying, "Is CHAT available? Is CHAT available?" They're asking dispatch. And more often than not, dispatch says, "We don't have a CHAT available right now." So I think this will really help us out on a daily basis. The MRTs are working Monday through Saturday. I would like to see a social worker with the two of those MRTs that whole period during the day.
Appreciate that, because I mean, this is a great program, and just your numbers from the six months there, the emergency rooms, EDs, right? That's, that's $1,000 a call, I always, I use that estimate, you know, anytime I call ambulance, it's a grand. And so that's, you're saving the city and you're saving everyone across the board a lot of stress relief and a lot of, and financial dollars. So I appreciate, and I appreciate those metrics, because those are very helpful, because you can equate that with a dollar, and you can equate that with additional services that police officer can take. So I appreciate those metrics that you have there, and.
Well, and that's $1,000 that the individual doesn't pay, right? It's not, like, we don't send them a bill, they, they're diverted from, yeah.
Yeah, vered from charging someone.
Not just, I mean, I think I'm trying to amplify what you're saying, it's not just the city saved $1,000, it's the individual person that was in a crisis saved however many $1,000 if they didn't have to go to the emergency room.
But ideally, they receive appropriate care.
Right, right, right.
Because our social workers have that toolbox, which the firefighters don't. They don't know all the service providers we have throughout the city, and they're not in a position to make sure that that patient gets to there.
And the other calls that you said, you were able to cancel the police officer's response, which is also a great avenue. Now, now you have people focused on the problem that they can, that they are skilled to handle. The police officer's skilled at one job, CHAT team's skilled at another position job. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, this number will enable us to provide effective service during the day, Councilmember. And you said something about overnight, it will not enable us to have a social worker on overnight. What we have seen is that the vast majority of our calls are during the daytime hours when the city is occupied. There are some calls that come in overnight where CHAT is unavailable, because there's no, there isn't no staffing for that right now, and on Sundays, there's no one available on Sundays. But it should get us to a point where we should have someone available in a, in a regular business day that can come out and respond.
Wonderful, thank you.
I have a question, Chief. You're, you're saying, you mentioned that the two, the four additional CHAT team members would be co-located with the MRT teams, is that, is that the ideal model going forward? Is it the MRT and the CHAT team is sort of an individual team? And do we just need to call it one thing, or?
Yeah, it's still, we still consider, until we've done this for a year, Councilmember, it's a pilot program. So we're doing, we're doing two different types. We are co-locating a social worker with the MRT and calling it CHAT. When there's a social worker on the team, it becomes a CHAT response. If there's no social worker available, it's just an MRT.
So there's no social workers that go without an MRT?
No, they will not respond right now. The other part of the model comes out of the Public Safety Building, and a social worker will respond with one firefighter from the building, and that, from our medical division, at least one. And they'll go out and they'll handle referrals. They are not currently being dispatched directly to the scene, they're being asked to respond by the crews, or they've heard something on the radio where they think they can make a difference, and they self-respond. So we're looking at those two models. I will tell you, from my perspective initially, I think having the social worker on the MRT is working well. We didn't know how long that would delay other MRT calls, you know, if there is a social work intervention, how long will that MRT be there? There's no, maybe there's no physical trauma going on, but there is psychological or substance abuse trauma, and the social worker is working with the patient, the MRT has to be there with them, because they're, they're together all the time. So we were interested in how long the MRT would be out of service. We do not think that, at this point, it's really a significant delay in service for other MRT calls, so that's looking positive.
Okay. Councilmember Petro?
I just want to take a moment and be positive, because I'm always like bash, like beating this drum, your metrics are beautiful. Like, like I know where the cost savings are, I know where the mandate for expansion is, I know the mission of what is happening. Thank you for this clarity, it is amazing, and it should be a model for everyone, when, especially, we are piloting a new program. I know that this one is worth additional investment, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Petro, appreciate that.
Councilwoman Waldemaros?
Thank you, this is so exciting, yay! I'm so excited about this, I knew it, I, we all knew it, but I knew it, we talked about this metrics and how it's going to show that it works. We go and advertise it at the federal level all the time with our, you know, with our peers up there, so I'm excited to send this to them as well, to, so that they know how Salt Lake City, the capital city, you know, is doing the alternative response models for the social things that are happening in every city, but, you know, how we take care of business here, and how we're going to keep taking care of business, and that we need their support as well, not just Salt Lake City, the county, the state, and our, our group up there, our representatives and senators. But having that said, I'm excited to expand this, so I'm in support of this, obviously. I always want, I have two questions. These new, these four new FTEs, are they going to be those that are going to be available at night? Or not yet?
They'll be available till approximately 8:30, Councilmember, in the evening, not overnight.
Not overnight. But our goal at some point perhaps next year is to have somebody at night, maybe?
I think we'll continue to generate that data overnight, data that where CHAT could have a possible intervention, and then we'll address that depending on the service demand.
Okay, and then on the second portion, I am not sure if you mentioned that if, that you, or I've heard that before, that it's really hard to find social workers right now, like people that would like, so is that your case as well? Like, are you seeing that, like, we could use more social workers, but we also, where do we find them?
I think, I think it'd be interesting to hear from our social work manager, who is in that population, and just give you an idea of what we saw the first go-around. So I'll ask Natasha to come up and just give, give her experience.
I'd like to hear that, too, thanks for the question.
Yeah, it's interesting.
It's interesting.
Hi, thank you.
Hi, Natasha.
So you were asking whether it's hard to find social workers right now?
How's that market, how's?
Yeah.
The desirable job.
Do people want to do that job?
Yes, I mean, there are a lot of websites that have alumni or recently graduating social workers who are looking for employment, and so I know where all of those are and how to access those. The first time when we were hiring, I felt like we had a lot of applicants. We had 40-plus applicants, and even one of our staff was adamant, she wouldn't leave her job, she was not going to leave, but she would appease me and meet with me and talk about the job. She is one of our social workers now. So once she learned about this job and found out, and she was like, yep, and she has no regrets. She says all the time she's very happy. So we might run into some issues finding people, but I'm pretty optimistic, I think we have a really good program, and I think we can show that to people, and they'll want to be a part of it.
Great, and the reason why I ask is because we do have the apprenticeship programs in other, you know, in IMS and in other areas, or public services. I was wondering if there would be a way to incentivize people to come and work for CHAT, if we have those apprenticeship programs, or advertise heavily that the city does reimbursement for additional education if they were to become Salt Lake City employees, so they want to go to the next level into social working education. Hey, the city is interested in that as well, and anyway, just food for thought, if, you know, if we're having those issues, I would be happy to say, maybe we do an apprenticeship as well, or some sort of incentive for people to get into that field and join us at the Fire Department.
We have the same thought, Councilmember, so an internship program, maybe University of Utah, we're already in communication with them, and that's already being developed.
Okay, there you go, thank you. Awesome, thank you.
Councilmembers, any more questions for the Fire Department budget? It was very clear to the requests, so thank you. Okay, seeing none, I guess we'll move on. Thank you so much for being here, Chief.
Thank you, Council.
All right, well, look at that, we're 15 minutes ahead of schedule, even with our technology delays. We are moving on to item number two, which is the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 budget for that Department of Economic Development. Sylvia Richards from the Council Policy Analyst staff will be introducing this item, and then we have Lorena Rievo Jensen and Jake Maxwell from the Department of Economic Development here, as well as I see other people from the department in background. Hi Sylvia, do you want to give us a quick introduction?
I would love to, thank you.
Hi Lorena and Jake.
Hello. The functions of the Department of Economic Development are twofold. The Business Support Division promotes local economic opportunities and business expansion by developing partnerships with communities and businesses, organizing events, and advocating for small and medium-sized businesses. Two of the funding programs which can assist businesses in the city include the Economic Development Loan Fund Program and the ARPA Community Grant Program. The proposed budget for the Business Support Division shows a $191,559 or 7.9% increase over last year. There are no FTEs proposed in this budget, so the number remains at 14 for that group. Next is the Arts Council Division, which supports artists and arts organizations to facilitate the development and expansion of art, the arts, as well as of awareness and access of the arts in the city. The Arts Council programs that the council members are familiar with include Arts Artist in the Classroom, Arts Grants Program, Living Traditions Festival, and the Twilight Concerts. The proposed budget for the Arts Council shows a $147,912 or 14.4% increase over last year, and there are no new FTEs proposed in this budget either, so that remains at 8. And I'd like to turn the time over to Lorena and Jake now. Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Lorena.
It is wonderful to see you, and thank you so much. I know that this is a long process for you, but we're excited to come before you, and thank you Sylvia for working with us. I also want to say before we actually go into our presentation that, from our perspective, this process is arduous, and everyone involved from the Budget Committee, the administration, everyone has done his best to ensure that we're asking for the right things, and we're being fair to one another, especially with other sister agencies, and with all the demands in our city. So basically, our department, as you know, our mission is to focus on human-centered economic development. Therefore, we actually come together as a department, as a team of passionate professionals, to build businesses, but also professional line, a professional, but also build a wonderful life for our residents. We align our resources and streamline our processes to grow and nurture our city that can foster, so in order to foster gainful job creation, thriving business districts, neighborhoods, and ensure that we support our diverse arts and culture scenes that we have within our city. With that, if we could go to the next slide. Then we can go to the next one. As I was describing, we have 22 staff members that provide this work for our city, and I have to say that in my professional life of 30 years, I have found an incredible team of passionate, committed individuals that support every single community, every single business district, so thank you to them for the work that they do, and our senior leadership is also here, and I want to thank them publicly. If we go to the next slide. With that said, as you will see in this slide, we have highlighted a few of our initiatives, projects, and as Sylvia described, our different divisions that we have. Just to highlight a few, under Economic Development, we have the Healthcare Innovation, the Youth Career Pathway, ARPA, Sister City Diplomacy, in terms of our Art Council, I mean, there's so many, we've been enjoying a course, the Living Traditions, and tomorrow night is the first night for our Twilight Concert Series, and I believe Councilmember Pui will be there to support that event, and many of you also may be joining us as well. But I do want to read, and I think in the words of our residents, basically what these programs actually do, and the reason I focus on ARPA, and the reason I focus on the Twilight Concert and the Arts Council, is because we have had a member of our community who sent, and hopefully you have also received this, an incredible email outlining what these programs do, and what does our economic development in conjunction with your support and, and the administration's support, what we're doing for our communities. This is from Maudo, Salt Lake City, Capoeira, and this is what he stated. My Capoeira School attracts people from all walks of life in Salt Lake City, including underserved populations such as refugees, immigrants. underserved populations such as refugees, immigrants, and people of color. I've been told over and over again that the Capahueta community I create in Salt Lake City has provided a sense of belonging for people who feel displaced. I received two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the Salt Lake City Arts Council. For my project, I organized a week of community workshops in African Brazilian arts, including capahueta, and ended the week with a public performance of these arts. This gave me the opportunity to bring eighteen artist guests from around the world, and the funding helped me cover some of the costs in bringing them to Salt Lake City. Programs and grants like this help me continue to provide the arts services and affordable rates for our more vulnerable community members. I was also a recipient of the ARPA Community Recovery Assistant Grant. I follow closely through the process by viewing the public documentation and meetings. And I was so impressed with the ARPA grant committee. And as we know, that has come across in previously before this committee, before the council, along with the department, um, that was willing to help us, uh, with the application process, striving for equity and inclusivity in all their work. Um, I think it's important that I share these words with you, because I can provide you a list of things that we do, but without the feedback of our community, we really don't know how well we're doing. And this is an example of when we come together, we have the arts, we have, uh, we have the ARPA grants, we have your support, and we have the administration. I think we're doing impactful things for Salt Lake City when it comes to its economic development and economic recovery. Um, I also did highlight the youth career pathway. As many of you know, last year, uh, November, I believe November, around November tenth, we came together with the Salt Lake School District, the Salt Lake Education Foundation, and some of our life sciences companies, Recursion and BioMario. And those companies opened their doors to ensure that our youth in our city have an opportunity to visit them and see what we're doing, so they could see themselves in those professions, whether they're scientists, whether they're project managers. And I'm just going to read two quotes, and I, I hope you don't mind that I do this, but I think it's important for me to relate, in the words of those students, how they thought this program was affecting their lives. I greatly enjoyed, and this is a young student, the first lab we visited. I felt very empowering and made the future seem hopeful. It seemed that there was a strong focus on how any, any of us could work there. I also liked that so many people of respected positions chose to come and spend time with us. It made me feel like I was valued to them and that they care deeply for us. Again, going back to being a human-centered economic development department, um, the words of the people that we're serving, I actually believe are the ones who are telling us whether we're going in the right direction or not. So I just, and Jake will talk about more about the youth career pathway and the human, uh, and the youth, uh, summit later on. Next slide, please. In order for the Department of Economic Development to continue in our mission, uh, we have come before council to request the support of, uh, our request to the Budget Committee, which is eighty thousand dollars. We haven't had a strategic plan. Uh, it's, I think the, the last strategic plan actually ended in 2020. We are a different, um, community. We're a growing community, and it is the right time to do this. We can look at how, um, you know, the priorities of the cities have changed, how we look, uh, to the future. We can look at the organizational structure. We can look at the projects and programs that we are executing to ensure that they're meeting the needs of our business community, um, and that includes accords, the arts, um, as well as of our residents. So we're asking for eighty thousand dollars so we can continue in our journey to ensure that we have the right program and strategies to continue building in Salt Lake City's future. Jake?
Next slide, please. Okay. So Lorena covered the impact of this youth summit, but I can give a little bit more background about how, um, we prioritize it in our department. So we're focused on healthcare innovation as an industry, um, but our business development division also meets with hundreds of businesses every single year. And so we know what the good jobs are, we know the connections to the businesses, and we want to get those out in front of the youth of the city and, uh, the residents. So the youth summit is intended to introduce students to the healthcare innovation industry, and we did that by having them tour two life science companies. They kicked it off with the mayor at Recursion. Um, they went to BioMario, and we closed out the day at the Biohive Summit, where they got to do a STEM activity. And then heard from, uh, industry leaders from their own neighborhoods, um, talking about their path to where they were. Um, so because of the feedback we got from the students, um, I'll also mention that we had fifty students, but we had to set a limit, a cap, on how many students we could support to not overwhelm the businesses, and there was, um, closer to a hundred kids interested in going. Um, so this is just something that we want to continue to offer. Also, the makeup of the students that attended was very impressive. We had, um, nearly half were girls, and, uh, half were from an ethnic minority group. On the healthcare innovation item, this is to support our strategic partnerships. So rather than duplicating efforts, we really want to support the efforts that are successful in the community. This comes from the Healthcare Innovation Blueprint to support the pillars, um, for strategic partnerships, brand promote grow, and increase investment. And so these partners listed here, uh, help us to achieve those objectives. And so here are our insights. Um, you can see the healthcare innovation youth summit was a must for us with a score of fourteen. Um, the strategic partnerships is a should with a score of sixteen, and our strategic plan was a must with a score of eight. Um, next slide. Thank you for having us, and we'll open it up to questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Councilman Puy.
Yeah, quick, quick question. Um, thank you for all the work that you guys do. I, um, there is no, it's no secret about, um, my support for this, for your leadership and for this department as a whole. Um, I believe that, uh, you know, the, the need to foster, facilitate, and support current and future businesses is key to the city, uh, and in whatever form, uh, this, they come, from art, you know, artists to gigantic multinational companies in our, in my district. So, um, I'm connecting them with the resources. So the summit is something that I'm very interested in, uh, the youth summit that you guys, uh, just did. Uh, and what is, uh, in general, I know that this is a little maybe beyond the maniask or, you know, the budget specific, but what, what did we learn about that? What are the next steps? You know, is this something that in general seems to be worth to keep on doing? But how do we, uh, measure success on this program? Um, I just, uh, in general, and I'm not talking about this, but in general, I tend to not, uh, struggle with programs that are feel-good programs, right? It's, oh, we feel good about doing this, but what is the specific, uh, goal that we are trying to achieve and how we are measuring that? And the second part is related to the Arts Council, um, and related to some of the budget complications we had earlier this year, and how do we prevent that from happening, uh, this next year, uh, coming up? Because, uh, that was, uh, complicated. Uh, I hope that that doesn't happen, uh, again. So those two, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Councilmember Puy. I think those are great questions. Um, I'm going to turn the time to Jake, who can address the issues you raised regarding how do we measure performance? We completely agree with you. Uh, so he'll, he'll talk about that, and then we can discuss the second question related to the Arts Council.
So in conjunction with the youth summit, we've been working with the school district on building out their biotech CTE program, and they've been doing that. Um, they now have seventy kids signed up for fall semester, and we are also trying to help hold together partnerships, um, to continue to fund that. So Talent Ready Utah meets with us weekly as well. The State Board of Education, uh, joins that as well to make sure that the strands and standards are in place. Um, and Talent Ready Utah is hoping to help fund that. This youth summit is a way for us to merely introduce the industry to kids and to inspire them. Um, we were intentional about who the businesses put in front of the kids so that they could see themselves in those roles. Um, and so we're hoping to spark an interest. And now with this biotech CTE offering, there's a way for them to continue to interact with the industry. Bringing them to the Biohive Summit was also intentional so that the businesses could see that these kids were interested in those jobs. And so with the biotech course being in place now, we now have a, uh, an area for businesses to continue to interact with the kids.
What's a CTE?
I'm sorry, Career and Technical Education.
For high school students?
Yep, for high school students.
Um, and then the second question, Councilman Puy?
Sure. Um, I also want to say that Felicia Baca, our director, division director for the Arts Council, is also here. And I just want to convey that, thank you for that question. Um, I think, uh, it's, it's very timely. I want to assure you that we have done a lot of work, uh, to ensure that this doesn't happen again. There is a policy and procedure that we've worked, um, uh, with Felicia side by side. We've also worked with our finance department, Mary Beth, um, who has reviewed that. Uh, her board, meaning Felicia's, um, Arts Council Board, has also reviewed many of the steps. She's also engaged a consultant. Uh, so I will ask Felicia to come up and provide a little bit more detail, but we've done a lot of work to ensure, to all of you and to Council Puy, that, uh, we're putting basically, uh, you know, uh, ensuring that we have everything set up so it doesn't happen again.
Hi, thanks for having me. Um, I would just, uh, concur with everything that, excuse me, that Lorena said. And, um, we are working directly with, with Mary Beth on this issue, um, to ensure, one of, one of the, um, things I'd like to explain that occurred is that with the Arts Council Foundation and the division, we have to put our in-kind projections of staff into that foundation budget, and those numbers were not updated in the foundation budget, but the Arts Council Foundation did not actually exceed any available funds. But because there was a data entry error in that audit of the Arts Council Foundation in the cities, it created an audit finding. So we have put procedures in place to make sure those numbers are updated and, and calculated dates with Mary Beth on budget amendment processes and confirming those numbers with her.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any other questions? Councilman Valdemaros.
Thank you, Lorena. Thank you, everyone. Hi, you're good. I'm, I'm excited about this, Lorena. I'm excited specifically with the Department of Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Yeah.
You know, it's very, very important. So I remember when I was an intern, sorry, I keep repeating this, but Salt Lake City's economic loan consisted of one senior advisor to that mayor at the time, a small business manager, and the intern. That was the Capital City Economic Development Group Division. This is, um, two thousand and five, two thousand and six. So to me, that told me that at that time, there's not a lot of interest or priorities for economic development, you know, in the capital city. Like, there wasn't really like, um, like a focus on it, right? But look at, look at us, you know, twenty, almost twenty years later, where we're at. And so I'm super excited. And also, look at your budget numbers, like, look at, look at how much they spend a year, or how much this department costs, like four million dollars. This is like the Capital City Economic Development Investment, like, in, you know, like, in, you know, taxpayer only compared to the other departments, I think this is pretty low, you know, in my opinion. It's pretty low, even though we're in a great position, you have a lot of staff, and, and obviously the focus is on economic development. So I'm excited for the strategic plan to tell us, is this number making the impact that Salt Lake City's budget needs overall, you know, with your department? Like, is this something that we need to increase because we need return on investment, you know, to cover our, um, our costs here and also, you know, and, and, and improve and, and grow as a city, as a capital city? So I'm super excited about this strategic plan. So I'm trying to say, I think you guys do a great job. I think, um, we just need to, not refocus, just like go over what, 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 what has worked and what we need to improve on. So it's amazing. But I, in, in the presentation, I would like to add, you know, that, um, that taxpayer, or sorry, that tax return, I would like it to be included in the strategic plan so that we know, if we invest this much in an economic development strategy in the next five years, this is what we can expect as a city to return, uh, you know, for our budget in general, whether it be more, um, we focus more on small, you know, small businesses, or we, we need to know how to invest so we can have a better return as an economic development strategy for the city. That's what I would like to see. Because sometimes it creates confusion. Are these feel-good projects, or are we really impacting what we really need to get done here, you know? Um, so I think having those numbers would be great. Um, what else was I going to say? And with the rest, I, I, with the rest, I think I'm pretty cool, so I'm excited to see where, where we go. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Dugan?
Mr. Chair, thank you. And I, as Congress, I agree wholeheartedly on that, so that's a great idea. There's just one question from the staff report about the mitigation funds for, uh, construction projects, and there's no increase to the funding for this coming year. So I, uh, because last year, I guess we added another two hundred thousand dollars. So I'm just assuming that we're, we feel good on, on construction projects going throughout the city, and we have enough to, to offset those, uh, pains of the, the local small businesses.
Um, I think that's, that's a really fair question, and it's a great question, and we appreciate it. Um, you know, I, I started my comments today with saying how difficult this process is and, you know, all the needs that we have. And whenever economic development comes to the table, which is, I agree with Councilmember Valdemaros, when it comes to strategic plan, we're a different city, our economy is different, even after the pandemic. Therefore, this is the right time to get that done. I think that the Budget Committee did an incredible job, and the best number was put forward. And yet, having said that, there's a lot more projects. Uh, one of the questions that came to us, um, that Sylvia sent to us was, uh, you know, is, is this enough? We did an analysis that was based on the number of businesses from previous projects, and I think we calculated about fifteen percent of them apply, and we came up with a higher number. Uh, so we did come, after we did our analysis, we did come up with a higher number, um, uh, than the two hundred thousand. Uh, therefore, that also includes that we have more projects coming up, one of them being downtown Salt Lake City, which the demand is going to be huge there. We have sure houses, and by word of mouth, the team going out there, uh, the program has become well-known. Therefore, we are having more businesses asking for this funds, this grant funds. As of, I believe, April seventeenth, we have already exhausted all the funds, the two hundred thousand dollars for the projects that we had last year. So.
Lisa Schaefer, Chief Administrative Officer.
Hi, thank you, Council Chair, and thank you, Council, for the question. I feel like I need to come up here and save, save my friend. She's trying to be really nice. We only budgeted two hundred thousand dollars, which is the same amount that was budgeted last year, just because of balancing the budget and budget constraints, and you know how that all goes. Certainly, if there is more available funding, uh, this would be a great place to add funding. Construction right now is raging, and, uh, yeah. We'll, we'll spend, we'll spend some more if you're able to find funding.
Do we know approximately what time in, like, how far into the fiscal year the previous year's two hundred thousand dollars sort of ran out, or at what point we had to slow down some of those business-related construction mitigation processes?
The, um, the two hundred thousand dollars that was allocated for fiscal year twenty-three ran out in April. I think you just said that, right?
Oh, sorry.
No, do not worry.
No, I, I, I was wondering if you were asking for the previous year.
Nope.
Okay.
I just missed it.
April. So, we're out of funding currently, and that was the $200,000. And, and what my friend is saying here is that that was with the, the construction season at the time, we actually have added more construction projects in this fiscal year. So, it, the, the pressure on that, the demand on that fund will be great this year.
Can we flag that as a, a potential addition if, depending on when we get our final numbers?
And the, the question would be, what is that extra money we get for you to, so that's two-thirds, two-thirds. So, are you asking for another third, so another?
We, we could analyze that. I think that, that your team did some work around how much you think might be reasonable. And I can't remember what that is off the top of my head.
Roberta Reigl and her team, they run this grants program. And we requested half a million based on the percentage of businesses that have applied previously, and that was the number. So, $300,000 more than what we have there. Okay.
So, we funded it 200. She, she believes based on that analysis that we could potentially use 500.
It's not, I mean, it's not all or nothing, right? It's, it's whatever number. It sounds like up to 500,000 you are confident you could use.
Yes.
It's all helpful. It's all helpful.
But if we can add 100, it's, it's always.
It's all helpful.
Anything is helpful.
It's not.
Question for Lisa. So, Lisa, it seems like the Economic Development Group is the one that manages the funds. And then, is there any other department that actually is doing the work out there, like people doing the streets and their repairs? Is there anywhere in their budget that they can also help add to this, this need that we have so that, and the reason why I'm saying is like, wow, Economic Development is doing it, like, we're given the, but I'm thinking they, there must be somewhere else, like where we can.
Large projects have business mitigation funds. Like, the Third West Project had some money built into its budget for business mitigation. Is that correct?
You are correct, Councilmember. And those, those funds that are built into those large projects are about things like signage and access. This fund is completely different. This fund is about helping to offset costs that are due to construction in front of your building.
So, like, I had to change my delivery times, and that cost more money or whatever?
Right. Okay. Are you engaging someone to do social media for you, or you're doing social media? You have to buy software to ensure that your clients know when, where, how to get to your business?
Got it.
All right. Okay, thanks.
So, the, that makes sense. Councilor, is there any more questions on that? I have a question from the arts, for the Arts Council again.
Thanks, Council.
Iconic art on the west side. What does that mean? What can we expect? Is that enough money?
Am I getting my whale tail?
Couldn't the whale tail be at Ninth West and Ninth South?
Be dreaming about the brine line and the whale tail.
And the whale tail, exactly.
You know, it's going to be hard to top our existing iconic work of art. It's a tall order.
We can do it.
So, what we're currently doing is Public Art Program Manager, Renato Omedo Gonzalez, has been working with a number of different city departments and community engagement on developing a survey that went live yesterday. And so, this year, that goal for the iconic work of art is really working on what are the communities' hopes and wishes for this. So, the survey asked kind of a number of questions about what art inspires you, what do you think of about your neighborhood, in particular, of course, in Districts 1 and 2. And so, we're really doing site determination and community engagement and outreach this year.
And so, the 150,000, it's 150 in the budget, right, for that?
I believe in the CIP, but we also are looking at the bond sites, which have public art funds dedicated to them as well. And we partner and execute projects for the redevelopment agency as well. And so, we're, we're considering all sites that constitute the west side.
But the 150,000 that's being requested in this fiscal year's budget for your Division is for, that's just for the engagement, or?
Within, my understanding is that there's CIP funds in that total. So, there's nothing in, in our department or Division. All those public art dollars sit in CIP.
Okay.
Are they percentage for art dollars?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're allocated.
I believe so.
So, the percentage for art dollars in the CIP fund is being allocated?
I would want to confirm that with Mary Beth, because I don't know if she's here, but.
I feel like Jennifer is also someone else who, or Cindy, do you know the, Jen?
Okay.
Do you, do you know anything about the, is the percentage for art allocated automatically into the CIP fund? And then, that's what we're proposing to use for this?
I think it's a separate line item for this. The percent for art is, in this year, calculated separately from CIP. I think previously it was, and that means there's more essentially for it. There's also the line item in the RDA budget for this.
Did I make up $150,000?
I think it was 150.
Oh, it's correct.
I think so. One of the suggestions that we had was if the Council wanted to weigh in on whether those funds should be combined for a larger piece, or if there are multiple pieces, that that would be better.
How much did the whale cost?
I'm trying to remember off the top of my head.
And how much we estimated tail cost?
I think, well, about $120,000. And with inflation, I would say that project was underbid. So, we're, we're looking to aim higher than that.
Does that include artist fees, assembly? Wow.
Actually, a really good deal.
That's amazing. 120.
And we, I believe that number is 150, and then the CIP percent for art is, is a different number.
Well, I was gonna say, I think the whale is amazing, and I love the whale.
It's just the gift that keeps on giving.
But I think the west side deserves something as good or better.
I think the west side should be deferred to, and if we want to tell people to kiss our tail, that should be our option.
Kiss our tail. I'm sorry.
But I'm excited for that.
We will do our best.
This is true, Chair. Follow up on this. Obviously, you know, I've been talking to you and your department about art on the west side from, you know, way back in the day. It feels like a million years ago. It probably was last year at some point. Obviously, it was last year at some point. I, one of the staff questions relates to maintenance. And I would like to, because adding these beautiful pieces of art that are, everybody has an opinion about it, and that's what art's supposed to do, right? To create some sort of emotion. Some people had all sorts of interesting reactions to it.
Yes.
But maintenance is very important to, to this and how we are going to look in the future to, to maintain them. So, what is the department process on this?
Yeah, let me tell you a little bit about that. So, a couple of years ago, we sort of got a seed fund for public art maintenance and changed the ordinance to allocate 10% to 15% of CIP funds annually for public art projects. That was absent before, and we often worked with our partners in parks to repair works of art. You now have an annual report that's kind of commensurate from the mayor on what will be fixed in the coming year before the allocation is made. So, that fund balance of about $200,000 was, will be at the end of this fiscal year, almost entirely expended on repairs. And you'll get a report that will be forthcoming in July on that with the CIP process. So, we're back to having a balance that's just the 10% to 20% of CIP, which will not fix all the works that are, are on our list for the collection. So, we plan to be working with the Finance Department on looking at how to, to potentially make a line item ask in the future, because those funds will be expended very rapidly again on works of art and are also not eligible to care for our two-dimensional works of art in the city. So, there's a need.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we're working on it.
I see no more questions. Thank you so much for what you do for our community. Thanks.
There was one question that you raised in our, some of the questions that you raised that were sent to us, wanted to make sure that we answer all of them. That was the special assessment area. And wanted to just bring it up if you needed, wanted to discuss that.
Is there a new special assessment area proposed right now, or it's just the discussion about the process of creating special assessment areas?
We have been encouraging the administration to come back with a plan to address the, all of the small business nodes that are interested in having improvements in trash pickup and services and that type of a thing. And I think you were saying that you are managing the, the two, this, the Downtown Alliance and Sugar, oh, Sugar House is one, or isn't it?
Sugar House, there, we've done the pre-work before we actually put one out. We're going to be coming back, sending a transmittal on that. We have received a letter from Granary. And we've also heard that potentially North Temple will be somehow, sometime in the future, requesting for us to potentially look at, at a pre-review assessment process of special assessment area.
Yeah. So, so all of the areas at various times have asked about how they can get services, how their, their needs can be met in terms of extra cleanup, or garbage pickup, or nicer amenities, that type of a thing. So, right now, the administration has done quite a bit of work looking at that. But they're, as far as I know, and Lisa could tell us for sure, but I don't think they're ready to make a proposal of a system. But that could be coming your way if you are interested in learning more. This department has said that you probably don't have capacity to manage more.
No, we, we don't have capacity. And, you know, we like to perform at a high level, and these are very extensive in terms of the process, and we want to do them well. So, as they continue, the requests continue to come, there may be, there will be a need for us to have, you know, a FTE position eventually. Yeah.
Do we look at sales tax generated in terms of what level of service is given to certain areas?
No.
That's never considered?
No.
It was probably an original consideration for the downtown and Sugar House, but we haven't done any other districts. And, and there's probably some legal equity issues that, that need to be looked at as part of this process, but.
Well, certainly. I mean, I think the special assessment area is a good tool for when certain areas want additional services for, for business notes. But I also, in terms of a policy discussion, I think, I'm not opposed to looking at sales tax revenue generated in terms of like, there's a lot of business activity happening in this area. There might be more garbage produced in that area, so maybe we pick up the garbage.
And the ones that were being asked are economic promotions, like the downtown ones is economic promotion. It's not for, yeah.
And I think that the, I mean, if, assuming we're going to have this policy discussion at some point, I think having all of those things considered, because I think different business districts ask for different things.
Different things, that's correct.
Some want better art, or better lighting, or.
Gardening.
Landscaping, things like that.
Can I, can I ask, is there an SAA designation? And I get that we have issues with the port overlay. But for instance, we meet with people down in, like, near the sweets candy area who have various needs. Is there something for maybe business districts that aren't so reliant on foot traffic and people buying goods, but who are nonetheless economic engines and actually are what keeps this, not property taxes, what keep the city running? Is there an option for them to have an SAA if they choose to?
So, the SAAs are always based on the number of property owners requesting. And they usually come to you as well as council members for their respective districts. So, once they, per se, in the Granary, we received a letter, they said, you know, we, this is something we want to do. They will be reaching out to council members. I believe three, through of you are part of that Granary District. And then, what we do is meet with them, analyze, and then often there is a request to do the pre-work that needs to be done. And that we come to you and request for a budget amendment. I think for Sugar House, it was $60,000. And in that case, it was the Sugar House Chamber, the Community Council there, as well as a local alliance, I can't think of their name, but they came together and requested the funding that you allocated to, to have that work done. So, we hired a consultant, they did the work, and now we're in the next phase where we're going to be coming back to you to present the findings and moving forward.
I think this is a powerful tool, especially for unlikely places. Our warehouses and everything to the west require this. But I also just want to say, thank you. Your work means that housing stays affordable, because revenue streams you innovate take the pressure off of property owners. Your work makes sure that our constituents are employed with dignity and have economic mobility. We know that economic development does not happen by accident. The only thing that happens by accident is economic exploitation. So, I love that you all take such a proactive, protective stance for our homeowners, for our constituents, for the people who come in from the suburbs to work here, and that you're creating a vibrant city that I want my kids to call home one day, where they can find meaningful employment for themselves. Thank you for all of your work.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to have the opportunity to do this. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Council, we are at 2:12. Do we have the representatives from the Attorney's Office here, or should we go to break early? Break? Okay. We are scheduled at 2:30 for Attorney's Office.
Let me have send to.
Right, I think we need to wait for, for the district attorney. So, why don't we go to break right now? Or do you want to start with unresolved issues, or go to break now and then just start unresolved?
I have, I have a lot of issues, so.
We, yeah, we, we all do. Okay, do we want to start that? I, I'm fine either way. Our break was, is scheduled for after the Attorney's Office, so we could either just do it now and then power through after, or start unresolved issues?
Yes.
Let's just start unresolved issues. That sounds like what we're doing.
I think I printed out a new sheet, but since the printing of that sheet, we've added two items. So, I know, I think we just, there's no way around that. So, there are two documents where we're tracking unresolved issues. One is the document that's, I think, printed out in front of you, which is the latest version of this tracking sheet. You'll notice that there are three columns across to the right. And the reason that we've done that is that some of the items can be funded with things that are not the general fund, right? So, for example, quite a few of the housing items, so, or in fact, all of the housing ideas, starting on line 22, could be funded either with RDA funding or dormant housing funds. I sent some of that information to you guys last night, and the updated unresolved issue staff report has that item as well. So, we can go through those items. Maybe that would actually help to, if we could do that later, because I'm not prepared for that discussion right this second. But I was going to go over the additional unresolved issues that came up just in the last couple of discussions. So, we've added on the list that you won't see on your sheet, a line item for construction mitigation funding and economic development. And we've put a placeholder of $300,000, although based on the discussion, it sounds like that amount is scalable. And so, if, you know, $100,000 is available, that that would be fine. The next item that we've added, and this is based on new information from the administration that was shared just before the meeting, that, based on some increased collaboration between PD and compliance, and in response to a few council members asking questions about what are the city's tools to enforce on RVs that are parked longer than the allowable area, they are proposing, or they, they put together a proposal that's not in the budget, but the council could add it if you wanted to, called an RV compliance team. And it would be three FTEs and a vehicle. So, of the $398,000, it would be 398 for the fiscal year '24 budget, $398,000. Some of that money would be one-time money. So, because it includes a vehicle. So, not all of that money would be needed on an ongoing basis. So, we're asking them for some follow-up information on that.
How many FTEs?
Three.
Three ongoing FTEs doing outreach?
And, and maybe Lisa can jump up. My understanding is that their primary purpose would be to encourage RVs to move along, right? If RVs have been parked in one area for a very long time. Lisa, do you have some key points of what they would do? Thanks.
Yes, that is correct. And I am probably not going to articulate this as well as probably Julie Croxton or Jorge Chamorro could. I've asked them to send me some information right now, and they're diligently working on that. The ongoing cost would be 325. So, it's, I think it's 61 in, in one time is how that works out, 60-something in, in one time. Yes, their, their primary purpose would be to enforce the streets for storage or. Yes, their primary purpose would be to enforce the streets for storage ordinance, and do that on a more regular basis, there are over 100 vehicles in their queue right now, and so this would help to sort of help people move along, but more than that, it would be making sure that our compliance officers who are hired to do compliance activities, including, you know, downtown activation of the streets, making sure that the traffic is moving, writing parking tickets, helping out with our crossing guards and all of those are available for that function. So, it's kind of a two-sided thing, so it's increasing the compliance on the streets for storage ordinance, and it's also freeing up compliance officers that are currently pulled off their duties to do that now.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, but none of the funding is to, well, Councilmember, go ahead.
I mean, I guess I'll give you a little background from my side of the story, obviously the amount of notes and messages from neighbors related to RVs is very high, especially in my part of town, but I'm sure all of us hear it, and the impact on the neighbors is great, and we, you know, we have an ordinance on the book, and it is fair to say that we have to find the common ground to enforce these rules, but at the same time, be fair to those that are living on the RVs, but the impacts are great, and right now, we don't have the resources to enforce on this as we have it on the books, and as a body that legislates and creates this book of ordinances, we have to also give the administration the tools to enforce on those. I also wanted to connect this with what my original intent was related to the blackwater vouchers, which, you know, is part of this unresolved list, is giving, this being an opportunity for those, telling them, telling those that are living on RVs, hey, this, here's a voucher to go dump your water, your black water, if you need one, and this is the resources that are around, and I'm hoping that if we can fund this, we can connect it with all the other parts of the system that the city is doing, with the chat team and all these other resources, so we can actually help those individuals that are living in our streets or in RVs. So, that's my background on this issue, I appreciate the administration coming up with an idea and a plan on this, so I hope that that helps understanding where this comes from.
I guess, I'm, this is the first I'm hearing of these three FTEs, so I'm not yet, have not yet wrapped my hand or head around it, but I'm, my first question is why would we be increasing the compliance team rather than adding to the HART team that could act, and, like, I think the money for the blackwater remediation, or, I just don't see the point in more money to get people to move along when there's nowhere for them to go, and I'd rather put the resources into teams that would help get those individuals connected with the things that they need, and I'm not sure that that is the HART team or not, but it seems to me like I'd rather focus energy in that area than...
Which is true also, that there is not enough resources in any of the other pieces of the equation, and we have no control about, in many cases, we have no control on housing in many cases, so, again, this is a good debate for us to have and a good conversation, I feel like we need to do something on that side of the enforcement side, because, again, many of our code-enforce people are pulling to this issue and not able to enforce in other parts of our code, so it creates a big gigantic jam on the system, and I hope that I, that's correct.
Yeah, that is correct, I would like to say I hurriedly asked Jorge to come up, so he's behind me, if you want to ask him some questions, he would have a better way to answer those, and also, I just want to make it super clear that your point is very, very right on, and we are not doing this in terms of just the compliance team only, this is a multi-departmental effort to try and address this specific issue, the HART team is absolutely involved, and Andrew can talk about that.
Go ahead, Andrew.
You're right about the bigger picture is there's not a place to go, and that's true, that's probably the reason we've got 100-plus vehicles across the city that are across the city, but predominantly moving west of I-15 for the most part, it's less occupied, there's more open space, bigger streets, fewer folks on them, those kind of things. The current effort that's happening for winter overflow next winter to have 600 to 800 beds for winter, that's also sort of meshed with Wayne Meterhauser's work on another emergency shelter location as soon as this year, but figuring out where to put that in the land, that is a good answer to where to go, combined with the housing pieces, so there is a pilot that will be part of the former Ramada for parking, so there are some efforts to move to more solutions. This is an effort from the city and to say, we still need to help folks not entrench in one location or multiple locations, because what happens there is you set up a vehicle, the vehicle towed you there leaves potentially, and then you set up camp essentially in multiple locations, and it's very difficult, because right now, compliance is going out, because it's a parking issue, because we have a 48-hour parking ordinance, right? They go out, they can enforce two days a week, usually Tuesdays and Thursdays, but you can sort of do the math, 48 hours, you do the notice, you can't catch them the next time, or you can't get somebody out there to help immediately, it becomes weeks and weeks. So, this is one effort to try and do an intervention, because for the most part, when there's smaller encampments of folks who are parking a couple of vehicles, when they're given notice and we come back to enforce on the 48 hours, they leave voluntarily, they move. So, part of it is helping just keep the movement and keeping compliance with the accorded ordinance. There could be a further discussion, obviously, from the council about the ordinance itself, because our current ordinance never envisioned occupied vehicles this way, and so we don't have anything specific to that, so I think there'd be some appetite to look at that as well as part of this, but then you're right, we're still working on that ultimate solution, but where they can go legitimately.
I guess, I guess for me, the three additional FTEs feels like a big, a big budgetary item that is setting a policy direction, and I'm not yet ready to say that that's the policy direction I'm comfortable with, but do we need to look at this issue holistically? Yes. Councilmember Petro.
So, I'm so incredibly torn on this, because I'm one of the people who's talking to any team that will pick the phone up for me, because this is, this is huge, and it's schools and the duress under which the people who are occupying these vehicles, it's increasing, and I'm seeing increased tensions between the people who are forced to live in their vehicles and the neighbors around them. Notably, we have at least one school that goes K through 8, where parents and the people inhabiting the vehicles have gotten into altercations, and it's the parents calling me, telling me that this happened. So, I see this as a huge issue, and compliance has to happen, we have to be able to let our kids go to school and drop them off without, you know, conflict, but do we have any timeline on when there's a place to go? I feel like, the investment to me is sound, but I hate the idea of it being a Sisyphus sort of trying to push a rock up a hill kind of thing, do we have, I know I'm probably asking for blood from a turnip by asking you this question, especially on the public record, but I do need to ask it in terms of a policy direction and in terms of making sure our investment does what we're hoping it will. Is there anything, do we have any sort of timeline on the horizon for when we can stop pushing the peas around the plate and like, you know, get them to a destination?
The first answer is probably there is a deadline of this year for winter, we have that every year, obviously, this year, the numbers are larger, so October is when that 600 to 800 beds should be available, depending on where it's located, okay? So, that's one. As far as the year-round 24/7 option that we've been working with Wayne Meterhauser on, there is initial funding for it, there's direction to go and do it, they're working from the state end about the process to get consultants and get a provider essentially to do it, the big issue right now is just finding land, so he's actively pursuing that, and I don't have a timeframe for when he'll find the right piece of property, it may coincide with the current efforts with the comm process for winter overflow, because they're looking at similar properties across the entire county, so it could go together and work well this summer and locate multiple properties that could be useful, I just don't have a firm timeline for that.
I'm torn, like Victoria said, but, you know, what was easier for me to understand earlier, one of the fire presentations, the fire department representative said, these are the calls, this is how many we were able to do, and this is how many we couldn't do, so this is how we can solve this portion here with four more FTEs. We have this SLC mobile app, so it would be easier for me, for education purposes, to say, hey, we get calls and SLC mobile app and, you know, all of this related to RVs this many times a week, and we can only help move this many people, and we've been able to give resources to this many people and so on, but if we had three more FTEs, this is where we would have them go, or this is how we can help, or, and then, even with that information, we can also look at holistically and say, okay, maybe we don't need three FTEs, maybe we need to put that money into a place where they can actually go and park altogether, that's a designated spot for RVs for parking, so it's easy for everybody to understand from our staff compliance, the public, hey, you have an RV, you need, there's a place for you to go park, but you can't be parking in, you know, in a residential area where there's only 48 hours of parking allowed, and on top of some things that are happening that shouldn't be happening right outside, you know, right on the sidewalk or on the street where cleanup is difficult, where all of the things that we see in the street, so maybe I can wrap my head around if I had better information of how many people...
I believe they said that you guys have some of that, don't you?
Yeah, we have, hi.
Hi.
Good afternoon. For the record, Jorge Chamorro, Director of Public Services, and we have, we had this same conversation this morning, and yes, there is a log currently that has scheduled resources for the next month and a half, because we're addressing it on Tuesday and Thursday with the coordination of HART and PD to show up to these locations, so we have already booked Tuesdays and Thursdays for the next six weeks, and everything that comes in the next six weeks will be just added to the list. So, yes, we have a report and we can share it with council as to where the locations are, the size of these encampments, as well as the small ones that appear in multiple places as well, and when I refer to small ones as one or two vehicles, and large ones, we're talking about anywhere from five to 12, for the most recent one, around Wallace Stegner, 32 vehicles were involved, so those are the ones that require the most attention. Now, in terms of what this team would be doing, I just want to remind council that compliance has, the core function of them is to enforce parking across the city, including meter enforcement, including this 48-hour parking restriction in public roads. The most demanding one is the 48 hour, why? Because you need to show up, document the vehicle, and come back later in two days to confirm that the vehicle has moved and is now in compliance or not, so it's a two-visit, right? And they may be in compliance, which is very simple for a vehicle to be in compliance, they just need to move, and that's, that's the part that we enforce, but following up allows us to maintain that movement, to lessen the impact on one location that has been considered vulnerable, right?
And I agree, I think this is a very good point, Mr. Chair, sorry, I, it's easy, I mean, I, obviously, as you probably know by now, the issue related to those on shelter is very important to me, I mean, I've been pushing for a sanction campaign since day one, RV campaign, you know, probably also for day one, but we need to figure out how to minimize the impact to all the neighbors, and the fact that many of these RVs are in the west side of Salt Lake City, it is an impactful grade in the neighbors that don't need it the most, if you wish, right? The neighbors that are struggling with all sorts of other challenges, and we need them to move, and they can go legally a couple blocks away, or across the street or whatnot, and then, you know, reset the timer, but the idea is that many of my neighbors are telling me, this is happening, no one is doing anything, I'm dealing with, I have kids, they need to go to school, I cannot take them, there is garbage everywhere, something needs to happen, so there needs to be a mechanism to enforce our own things on the book, and I believe that this is a good first step towards that direction. Obviously, as you can see, and, you know, unresolved issues, there is a line 28, which, you know, I've been pushing for, which is sanction camping as a grant, but, so, I, you know, I'm not seeing this as a, when you said about holistically, I think we are trying to see this as holistically, and the state and the administration has been working very hard to get the state on board, and the state allocated money for this, I feel like we need to push more, but the fact is, many cities around us are enacting RV laws, which creates a bigger problem in our residents, and, again, a bigger, even a bigger problem on west side residents, in my opinion.
Okay, are there any last comments on this? Okay, so let's move on to attorney's office, and then we come back to unresolved issues after the break.
Can I say, while we're transitioning, thank you, administration, for hearing us so clearly and bringing a potential step towards a resolution.
All right, Sylvia, you have an introduction for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, the city attorney's office budget includes three divisions, the civil practice, recorder's office, and risk management, as well as a contract with the county district attorney's office to manage the prosecutor's office. The proposed budget request, requests an increase of 1.3 million or 11%, and that's mainly attributed to three factors, which includes the proposed addition of two new FTEs, the 5% salary increase, and the proposed $200,000 increase in salaries for the city prosecutor's office attorneys, and if approved, the FTE, number of FTEs will be 60.5. The two new positions are one new assistant city prosecutor position Miami model, and one new special project analyst and automation position in the recorder's office, and as council members are aware, there's been some discussion about salary parity among city prosecutors, county prosecutors, and legal defenders, and with that, I'll turn the time over to Katie.
Hello, city council members, I'm Katie Lewis, the Salt Lake City Attorney, and I'm joined by Sim Gill, who serves as the city prosecutor, Ralph Chiamnis, the chief deputy district attorney, and Paul Fuller, they'll come up later, we actually have two slideshows, the city attorney's office PowerPoint, and then the prosecutor's office, and I thought I would give my presentation and then give you a brief introduction about the relationship between the district attorney's office and the city prosecutors, and then hand the rest of the time over to Sim, Ralph, and Paul for their presentation. So, if we could start my city attorney's office slideshow, that would be great, and while we're waiting, I'll start by saying the city attorney's office is in a unique position, because we represent all departments in the city and both branches of government. We have a few divisions, our exceptional recorder's office, led by Cindy Lou Trishman, who has really transformed that division into a sophisticated service provider that is really committed to transparency. I have a leadership team of four division chiefs, Kimberly Chitres, Jonathan Papasideris, Katie Nichols, and Deputy City Attorney Mark Cutrell, and they are my right hands, that's right, I have four right hands, and we couldn't do the great work we do without their leadership. And then we also have a new risk manager, Lori Roberts, who came from Murray City and is bringing a wealth of energy and expertise to our risk division. So, thank you, we can go to next slide. This tells you a little bit about our internal service provider department, we are big city attorneys with a small staff of lawyers, and we are involved in every aspect of what the city does, we save the city money, we protect the city, we engage with the public in every department, and I would love for all of you to think about every issue that you all are working on, and every headline you see in the Salt Lake Tribune or other newspaper, and I can just about guarantee that my office is involved in it. We are a... We are highly trained and skilled professionals and I'm really proud of our team. Next slide. These are our three budget requests that are supported in the mayor's recommended budget for a total of $187,000 and some change. Next slide. Our first request is for $55,000 for some office structure and redesign. We have a culture of collaboration and ensuring that all of our city attorneys advise the city as a whole and aren't siloed into the departments or divisions they represent. And part of that is requiring those attorneys to be in the office and collaborate with each other. And on the fifth floor, you may be surprised to know that we don't have a sink or running water, other than the bathrooms and the drinking fountain. And so these, this budget request is for us to have a break room and to also have some paint in our offices so that when we invite people from the outside or other professionals, that they don't see our cracked walls. So thank you very much for supporting all of our professionals with that request. I'm not sure what happened to my slideshow, but I can.
You're asking for a lot, Katie.
Yeah, I know. I know, and maybe an ice machine.
I mean.
I know, I know, I know. If you have any questions, I can, I could take you up there.
I thought attorneys didn't need any of that. Especially government attorneys.
No, we don't usually, but.
So the question is, is there related, was the crack wall related to the earthquake? And is that, is that part of the process of being repaired now?
We have been informed that the cracks in the wall, while they might be related to the earthquake, are not included in the insurance estimate. And so this extra painting is actually for all of our offices, but definitely for the cracks. So thank you for your question on that.
Thank you for explaining about that.
So we can go to the second insight? Oh, one thing I wanted to tell you is the break room has been tentatively approved by the Historic Building Commission. And so with your support, we will be able to move forward with this. This is for inflationary and additional costs related to all of our contracts that we execute for citywide services and also transparency. Next slide. Our final request is for a new FTE.
One more slide?
The next slide, please. I'll just keep talking while we go to the next slide. It's for a new FTE, which would be a Special Projects Assistant, who would sit in the Recorder's Office and would serve both the attorneys and the recorders and would be a technical expert to help with grandma, e-discovery, other technology, and would really support the city as a whole, especially with expanding grandma requests, and would be focused also on both branches and any grandma or technology or records needs that the elected officials might have. So that's it for my budget presentation. You didn't see the last insight slide, but I can answer any questions. And then I also would love to give a brief introduction of the relationship between the District Attorney's Office and the City Prosecutors.
Council members, before we move over to prosecutors, any questions on those items? I feel like you should get water.
Thanks. Just maybe ice, too. I don't know what it is about ice.
You're asking for a lot now. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so before Sim and Ralph come up and Paul come up to present on the Prosecutor's Budget, I thought it would be helpful to give you an overview of the relationship between the District Attorney's Office and the City Prosecutor's Office. In 2015, and then again with some amendments in 2018, the city and the District Attorney's Office executed an agreement in which the city prosecutors, which are city employees, would be managed by the District Attorney's Office and the District Attorney would be deputized as the city prosecutor to manage all of that, that, those legal services. Those individuals remain as city employees, but they work in the District Attorney's Office and they're managed by the District Attorney. The city pays a management fee, an operating fee, and a lease fee for these employees. And then they also, we also pay them salary and benefits, just like any other city employees. As a final note, I know Sylvia mentioned, and you all have heard from Jen Bruno in unresolved issues, that there is additional discussion about the increased salary requests from the District Attorney's Office for the City Prosecutors. And I want to just say at the outset that as the department director, even though I am not the City Prosecutor and don't manage that group specifically, I will always support and advocate for employees being paid at market value. And I wanted to be sure that the council knows that whatever you all decide in terms of that salary request, I will support. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Sim and team? Are there questions as we transition? Okay. It's the Pride Festival, maybe, getting started. I don't know. I make it up. All right. Hi, Sim.
Hi, how are you? First of all, thank you so much for the opportunity to come and share some thoughts with you. Want to thank first before begin, the mayor and Katie as the City Attorney for supporting the proposal. Some of the changes that we are requesting and having their support is critical. Our issues aren't very long, but just as a couple of things. As Katie mentioned, that it's been a great fruitful relationship with our office. It is something that we make no distinction between city prosecutors and the district attorneys in terms of office training. They're a great partnership that gives us both proximity and economies of scale in terms of training and filing of charges. And it's been a wonderful partnership, something that we've been very, very proud of. So if we go to the first page on our presentation, okay. So currently, as Katie mentioned, Ms. Lewis mentioned, that we're here as a part of an interlocal agreement. From an attorney perspective, there's currently 16 prosecutors that are there. The identified base amount of $3 million, $3.1 million from, without any additions. One of the challenges that we have is that we, and it breaks down to two, first Assistant City Prosecutors, three current pending city prosecutors, five Associate City Prosecutors. And that should actually be six open prosecutors because one attorney has been on military leave. And so we've had a vacancy rate of approximately 31%. Currently, where we are is that we have altogether eight attorneys out of the 16 in our office. That's how depleted we are. And of those eight attorneys, two are on paternity leave. So we're actually down to six line prosecutors. And we can talk a little bit about some of the conditions that have driven us to that point. The next slide, please. So what our priorities going into this year are just two fundamental things. One is salary parity within the prosecution community. And then the second, a FTE request for the Miami Model Prosecutor. And let me take just a couple of seconds to address both of them. Coming out of COVID, our terrain for attorneys used to be fundamentally different. Then COVID happened and subsequent to COVID, as we come out of it. This paucity of prosecutors and access to talented legal talent has not only impacted our community, Salt Lake City, Salt Lake County. It's impacted the state. It has impacted my colleagues from around the country. I am part of several organizations at the national level and the access to prosecution resources has been impacting everyone, whether you go to Maricopa County, whether you go to Denver, whether you go to Florida. That, coming out of COVID, impacted that. Now, a couple of things happened subsequent to that as well. If you look at some of the data for the last 12 years, there was actually a reduction in the number of admissions that were going into law school. So there was a number of people who were coming out of law school had been depleting. The post-COVID adjustment and certain industries that thrived started to address that paucity by basically, from the top down, cannibalizing those assets, if you will. In the public sector, that impact has been felt profoundly as well. Currently, for example, we are trying to find parity even at the DA's office. We're almost 16 prosecutors now at the DA's office, separate from the concerns that we have, for example, at the city. One of the other responses from the market was that there has been a huge fluctuation. So people came back from COVID, some chose not to come back. Different private sector markets started to absorb them. And we saw a salary marketplace fluctuation that occurred here in the state of Utah. We were struggling with that at the DA's office to find that parity and we've been working with our council on that. That parity issue and market fluctuation was, it created a competitive environment from county to county, from municipality to municipality. Being exasperated until the last legislative session, when the Attorney General's Office got almost a 34% salary adjustment that was made. That again impacted the pre-existing market issue and compounded the matter even worse. The urgency of that matter was so great that we actually went back to our council and they responded by adjusting the base salary. So what is that impact? That impact is, in the state of Utah right now, if you are coming out of law school, zero years of experience, the market entry point is $112,360 at the AG's office. We have met that at the Salt Lake County office and the other counties have responded similarly to address market fluctuation. So that, what does that mean for us at the City Prosecutor's Office? That currently at the City Prosecutor's Office, entry is at $82,000. There's a $30,000 deficit in the entry level at the City Prosecutor's Office. So you can understand from a market analysis that if you are going to get a job at somewhere else making $112,000 or $114,000 a year, you're coming out of law school, you're not going to want to apply for work where you're going to make $82,000. So that is the, that is the market fluctuation that is impacting all of our different offices across the board. And with the paucity of the number of attorneys that we have, that exasperates the problem. So hence, the request for salary adjustments that has been proposed by the mayor and the City Attorney's Office, which we hope you will look at and fund for us because if we do not fund that, I will not be able to staff those positions. Those attorneys who are there right now, we are pleading with them to remain there because they know that they can leave right now and go to the AG's office and make $30,000 more, if not beyond that point. They know that if they leave the City Prosecutor's Office, we will certainly hire them at the DA's office at that salary level. So it becomes both an issue of fundamental fairness and our market competitiveness, but more fundamentally, our ability to actually staff, fully staff, the people that we need and be competitive to be able to do our job as public prosecutors in behalf of Salt Lake City. So that's the first part of it. The second part, the Miami Model Prosecutor.
Need to move to the next slides.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I was just going to mention.
I think two slides forward, actually. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the Miami Model Prosecutor is a request that we're making. Some of my colleagues who were here probably from many years ago may remember that at one time, we had gotten a federal grant that helped us create a CAT team model, which was a Community Action Team model. And what that allowed us to do is to take a prosecutor and embed them into our community to be granularly present for those issues, whether they're issues of homelessness or those issues which are of nuisance, those kind of issues. And it served really well. And when we went to Miami, one of the things that we have been trying to address is our homeless issue challenge that we have. And we've been in conversation with both Judge Landau and from legal defenders. And one of the things that we've recognized is that we need a dedicated court calendar where all these individuals can be moved into. And then we have the continuity of both accountability and follow-through with the kind of care that they need. But that needs a dedicated person for that dedicated caseload. So that is what the purpose of that particular ask is going to be. And that's why we've requested that because we think it will actually help us address some of the issues that have been being discussed more broadly and generically. So in essence, those are the two fundamental requests that we have, but I'm more than happy, and my colleagues and I are more than happy to answer any specific questions that you may have.
Thanks, Sim. Council members, we've talked about this one request a little bit already in unresolved issues. Any other questions while we have Sim Gil here? Yes?
I'm going to ask your forgiveness because I'm a direct communicator and this budget has given me fits and more gray hairs than I care to cover on a regular basis.
Never complain about a gray hair to someone who will take any you got.
So I would like to talk about two things. Number one, the numbers were not provided to the administration in time. I'd like to know where the bottleneck was and why now we're having to make dimes, do the work of dollars to get to pay parity, especially when it's always a consideration for this council and we're having to get blood from stones. And then the second thing is, I'd like to know what we've done to the culture in your office. We've read many reports and have a lot of anecdotal evidence. And I say this to my police people, I say it to every other department. When I invest a dollar, I want to be sure my dollar is going to do that work. And we know that while pay parity is important, we know among the emerging generation in particular, a sense of mission, acceptance, being heard, being responded to, and having a job that fulfills them personally is nearly equally as important. We're being told all the time, people don't leave jobs, they leave managers. What have we done to the culture in the department so that when we do raise pay as much as we can and get blood from these stones, that we are not going to continue to have a turnover rate that is this high?
I'll address the first one. My name's Ralph Chamnis. I'm Sim's chief deputy. The difficulty of this was that, like Sim said, when the legislature adopted the pay proposal, I frankly have been in government service for a long time and have never seen a pay increase of this size, particularly for attorneys. So we knew the Attorney General had made the request. We were frankly stunned that the legislature actually approved it when they did. The next part of that that was even kind of more surprising was that they actually made it retroactive to April 1st. So those were two events that frankly, none of us had seen, none of us could have anticipated. We did not actually get what the pay plan was and how they were going to distribute the money to the individual attorneys until right at the end of March. So it was kind of too late for, to get in the normal budget process. So we certainly wish that hadn't have happened. And we're certainly very appreciative of the mayor and the mayor's administration for even putting this on because it is such an emergent and kind of an unexpected way of handling with it. We first heard it, my first thought was, great, this will all happen July 1, you know, in the normal course when the state's fiscal budget, fiscal year runs. We were stunned that that included, you know, not only the cost of living, the 5% that the statewide employees got, but also this additional money. And we had to wait to see how it was actually distributed before we could even send it on to the city or our council to even have an idea. Because clearly, you don't want to overshoot if they're paying. They could have put that money in a different way. They weighted their money heavily at the entry level and kind of the beginning of the career for individuals, which I think is smart, given, like Sim said, the supply of lawyers has dramatically changed in the last 10 years, where people are not going to law school. The number of lawyers has diminished. The number of people who do not have jobs coming out of law school is basically zero. So it's difficult as government to make those promises when we don't know staffing, we don't know salaries. There's a whole variety of reasons why that makes it harder for us to compete in the market. So the short answer is, we certainly wish we weren't here. We certainly wish we weren't on the supplemental part. We wish we had known and had been able to provide that so that it could have been kind of the competition for every other budgetary item. Those are the facts of how it came about. So please know this was not, we didn't hold anything back. I joked the minute I found out the actual pay structure, I texted this to Deb Alexander and to Katie Lewis. And I was on my 25th anniversary trip to Hawaii with my wife on the beach saying, oh my goodness, we've just got this. What are we going to do? So please know, that's the short answer to the first part is, we didn't really know until we got that information. And since then, we've been working really hard to try to figure out what are the things we can do. Because I agree completely with the next part. I'll let Sim or Paul answer that. I can tell you, people don't leave jobs because, solely because of pay. But if you're a brand-new lawyer coming out in this type of market and you recognize you can make $20,000, $30,000 more somewhere else, I have a difficult time believing that we can create those other things would make someone not think, I will take those things as opposed to paying off my student loans for law school and/or a market, you know, a house in this housing market as well. So I hope that explains the first part.
Thank you.
And I would just add to that. It was not only as these developments happened, which we were trying to monitor and anticipate, but the net effect of that was existentially urgent. urgent. I also interact with the county council and one of the things that they don't want to, we have year-end budgets. One of the things that they never would like to do is to do a mid-year or pre-mid-year budget adjustment. As a result of this emergent existential issue, they ended up unanimously supporting in total--
6.1--
Almost $6 million, 5.9 million adjustment. So we could do, both, we could make the adjustments and LDA, Legal Defenders, could make adjustments as well. And that is unprecedented. But they saw that not doing so would create such a structural deficit that the institution could not survive.
I think that's my frustration, is that this is a high priority--
Yeah.
--as is everything else. And our constituents are already going to pay more for water this year. They are going to pay more for their sanitation this year. We are bleeding, people dry, and so it is frustrating to have to go back and try to find a couple hundred thousand here and there when it feels like we have a gun to our head because this is a necessary service.
Absolutely, completely. So as to the second question about, if I understand it, in terms of quality of life and culture in the office, I am very proud of our culture and we have taken a multi-pronged approach to address that issue. And you don't have to just take my word for it. We worked in a collaborative partnership with the Yale Law School. Actually, we petitioned to have them come, and we were selected out of a national search with the Yale Law School. And they came in for 18 months into our office and we were trying to, it was critical to us not only to go out and do our objective work, but also if we do not have the internal culture that coincides with the idea of justice and fairness and how do we internalize those procedurally and operationally? And that was their 18 months of work that they did because it was important for us, not for only the attorneys who were there, but how do we cultivate and nurture that for the next generation of attorneys who come in there? And the work that they've done and the work that our leadership has done in partnership with that continues to evolve and change our culture. The other part of that is that internally, from our, from a professional development perspective, we at the Salt Lake County DA's office, because of our training facility, we provide more opportunities for professional development in-house than almost any other organization in the state of Utah. We will probably do in excess of 30 to, I mean, 30 to 40 CLEs in-house. So that has been a huge boon for people in terms of wanting to stay and have that be developed. The other thing that we've done where the city gets the benefit as we, and it's selfish for me because I get the benefit of it as the Salt Lake County DA as well, and I take both responsibilities very seriously. We made about three years ago, a very conscious deliberate decision to change the model of how attorneys come into our organization, how they're acculturated into our organization. So we do, it's a four-year investment. We start with 1L, 2L, 3L lawyers in there and then post-graduation. And we have started to build that relationship of investment of time into their professional development with an eye towards that they will be hired by the Salt Lake City Prosecutor's Office as, on that. And then we expect them to work a year to two years at the city prosecutor's office before they can eventually be moved into the district attorney's office. So that's the model that we've created. So has that model given us any benefit? Yes. As I'm sitting here today, as of right now, I have 29 interns, 29 attorney, future attorneys who are in our office at different level of professional development. So that is helping us change the culture. The other thing that we've tried to do is we've tried to balance, life-work balance. One of the advantages that we have with this partnership, as well as for all the attorneys there, we have an onsite, in-house daycare center, which is unheard of because we know that this, young attorneys who are coming or starting families, that makes a difference. We have an onsite fitness facility. We do what we call open mic nights because we're bringing families in once every two months where people perform and we bring and welcome all the families of our people, support staff, our attorneys, because we want to have that work-life balance. We onsite have classes about yoga and meditation to give different experiences to all our folks. And then within the diversity of the work that we do in terms of cutting-edge stuff that we're doing, which is for this next generation, very important. We're the first office that created a conviction integrity unit in our office, which is very important to people in terms of justice and fairness. The pre-filing diversion programs and the alternatives to prosecution models that we have has been a huge boon for this next generation that is completely invested in the idea of justice and fairness. And so all of these different things that we're doing are continuing to evolve and create a very rich and diverse culture that people want to be a part of.
Do we do any feedback gathering on those initiatives to make sure that they're meaningful? They all sound wonderful to me. I have never been an attorney, so I'm very outside looking in. Do we do any feedback gathering to make sure that we're investing our time and energies in things that are significant to the people who work there?
Yeah. Go ahead.
To answer that question, informally, we do. We haven't done any recent anonymous surveys, which are a good idea and we probably will be doing those soon. But informally, we definitely seek feedback. Sorry, Paul Fuller, I'm the division administrator responsible for, I work with Scott and Paige in managing the city is one of my responsibilities. I wanted to add to two things that Sim said because I think it also answers your first question towards culture, environment, and feeling fulfilled. There's a couple structural things that we've done this year too, that I think has had a great effect on the city. The city used to be on our second floor and kind of apart from the rest of the county district attorneys. We intentionally changed that this year. We moved them up to the fourth floor. They're now co-located with our major crimes unit, which is another responsibility of mine. These are felony attorneys that do everything outside of our specialty teams. We did that intentionally so that they're on the same floor and working closely together on projects and cases, sometimes being able to crosstalk and stuff like that. That has had a positive effect and I think directly affects what your concern is. In addition to that, one other thing that we've done structurally is we've changed the way we prosecute a little bit. We have a little bit more of a vertical prosecution within the office now where the prosecutors are assigned to judges instead of maybe being a more random assignments, week to week, month to month. And that is allowing them to stick with their cases and their victims. I think it's serving not only them and their happiness and fulfillment in their job, but also the community well. So I wanted to give a couple more examples.
Can I jump in on just one group of things to the, if you haven't been to our building, we would love to show you the building. I think Katie mentioned that the dinner local was renegotiated. That was coincided with when we moved into the new building. The city, again, the city prosecutors, unless you knew they were city prosecutors, you would not know, they were different than employees of the district attorney's office. All of our offices are the same. All the amenities are the same. Like Paul said, we make, and Sim said, the training is the same. We make all, the computers, no difference between them except for right now, the, you know, the pay and benefits are controlled by the city council. But I would encourage, we'd love to have you come because it's a great building.
Yeah.
It's a great building. We're proud of it. Sim designed it with some real, real policy decisions on transparency. If you come in, you'll notice that at the front of every office is clear glass. We don't, you know, because if the taxpayers are paying us to work, they ought to be able to walk by and see what we're working. But we'd love to give you a tour, love to show you the daycare. The city does, because it's a county benefit in our local, we did agree that the city employees will have the same amenity. The city does subsidize that for anyone who actually participates in that benefit. But it's a great, that's the best part of my day is when all those kids walk around, you know, they bring them for a walk around the office.
Okay.
That's the best part of the day. So we'd love to have you come see anytime you'd like.
Thank you for the invitation. Okay, so I wanted to clarify the numbers and maybe Jennifer Bruno can help us, or Sylvia. I'm seeing in this list, 322. I'm also seeing a figure of 340 and a number of 214. Are these clarified figures and what do each mean? And all of those are in addition to the already proposed $200,000 increase, is that correct?
Okay, so they are, I think they are all in addition to the proposed budget, which includes $200,000. They are not in the proposed budget yet. So any number that's added would be the council's decision.
Mm-hmm. And 340 would be to fully fund them to the market adjustments, which would match the county district attorney's office attorneys as well as the Attorney General's Office. What is the 322,000 number?
So I think the difference between the 322,000 and the 340,000 is two employees that were not originally included in that salary adjustment.
Okay, so 340 is the correct number?
I think 340 is--
I don't think that included the two first assistance.
The 340 is the correct number, the full number.
And then the 214 is if we were to raise them to 95% of the market, but not quite 100%.
But it doesn't include those two employees, is what I'm worried about.
Two--
So I think that--
225.
Yeah, we would have to do more work to figure that out.
I guessed.
I'm sorry, I'm not a numbers guy, but I was, I thought it was 322 on top of the 200. The original numbers that were run, I know that I saw some by David Salazar, it was around 540 to get us to that thing. So I think it's 322 on top of the 200.
Right, which is, yeah, that's what we said. That's what we said in the beginning, yeah. The 200 is in addition to the 322. But the difference is that there's a 322 figure and a 340 figure and that is two employees that weren't originally factored in.
That need to be factored in or are they a different class of employees?
I think, yeah, I think we're coming to the understanding that they probably should be factored in and probably, yeah.
So 322 is just no longer, that's the old number, 340 is the updated number.
What do we need to do to make sure that we're dealing with the right numbers? If we're still adding employees at this late date, I'm really nervous. We need to be well past the, we have two more people point in this.
They were, I think, included originally and then we've had several machinations. So I don't know where the mistake was made, but we're pretty confident, aren't we, Jennifer, about the three?
We're exceeding the 90% threshold of certainty here?
I can't say that. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, it's the best guess we have.
Yeah, it's better than zero.
And we have to realize, this is for 16 or 18 FTEs. And right now, we have, we're staffed at eight with two on paternal leave. So they're not going to get there in this first year unless a miracle happens that we can hire up to 16 more or eight more attorneys in the next two to four months.
There would likely be some vacancies.
And the bar comes out to some. So the question I have is on that whole staffing side of the house is, I mean, this should have a serious impact on our case turn rate and our, and our ability to actually prosecute and go to court.
Yes, you're right. And I think you're making a very astute observation. This allows the bleeding to stop and puts us in the best position to hire in a competitive market without losing those assets that we have already put in the queue. But if we don't address this issue, we are going to lose even the limited assets that we have because why would anybody financially stay when they can walk across the town and pick up $30,000 more?
Okay. Alejandro?
Thank you, Sim, for being here, Ralph, and I forgot your name. I, so obviously, it's about money. Ultimately, it is about finding the resources. But, you know, we've been talking about this for weeks now to try to make sure that we find parity, not only between the attorneys within your office, but with the LDA. And as you probably know, it is very important to us to make sure that we raise those two equally, or at least that's the question we have, or trying to answer that as far as money. And I wanted to make sure that you knew that from us directly, or at least from me directly, that's what I stand. Obviously, if we have an unlimited amount of money, ideally, we match everything to the county level, which is the state level, and everybody is happy. But it seems like the reality is not there right now as far as resources. But it is my commitment to your attorneys to do whatever I can to raise that, but also to make sure that the LDA attorneys are matched to the same level. And that is something that I feel very strongly about. As you probably know, I did work for the LDA back in the day. So thank you for being here, I just wanted to give you that.
I hope that no one ever thinks that we would do nothing but fully support LDA attorneys because the system works, only works if both the defendant and the state have adequate resources. So our office has done nothing but believe that LDA needs, has the resource needed. I would also, just one other caveat to that is, I don't want people to just automatically think you have to double this number to get to LDA. Because in justice court, obviously, while the city prosecutors handle every prosecution, LDA does not handle every defense. There are private attorneys who take that as well. So there's a cutback on that. So it's not exactly double. Just to make sure everybody keeps that in the back of their mind.
All right, I think we're probably going to bring this back up again in the next item, which is unresolved issues when we talk about the whole, all of the things that are not yet in the budget and may need to be. Are there any other questions though about what this means first? Councilmember Wharton?
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to look at the sheet here, but did you already say what you would do if we were only able to do 95% at market?
It's not a question of what I would do. The question is, what would the attorneys who are there, who are going to be able to go somewhere else? So it does put us at a disadvantage. I think we just need, my job is to come and share with you what the reality is. And so, right now, we've had those attorneys, we've asked them to stay there because we said, hey, we don't know what the council's doing, it's, the process is going forward. And then, so I do worry about the ability to staff those positions and that's my concern. That's what I'm sharing with you.
And what's, with the unfilled positions that you have right now, how have you been addressing that?
So the way we're trying to do is that, of course, obviously, the salary, truing up the salary was critical. So now we are competitive. The second part of it is, to fill those positions is why we invested, made that four-year model. For the first time, I've never had as many interns and as many people interested in coming to, to be working at the city prosecutor's office and at the DA's office. So we are doing everything we can, both in terms of going outside and recruiting, as well as making the long-term investment in, from 1L's all the way up to post 4L. Now, I'll share one story with you. For example, we had a person who we're very supportive of. He is getting ready to take his bar exam. We've kept him hired as a clerk while he's getting ready to take his bar exam. He's from Las Vegas, he brings a level of wide experience and diversity. And after having made these multiple-year investments, he's thinking about going to the Attorney General's Office. And I can't honestly stop him because he's going to make $30,000 more. But he was in line to be hired at the city prosecutor's office. So are there other people who we had cultivated to be hired at the city prosecutor's office who are not going to apply at the city prosecutor's office? Yes. That's just the reality that we have to acknowledge. So that's where we find ourselves.
And our hope is that because of the increase in number of law clerks and interns that we've had, that we have kind of been making them conditional, you know, we can't make them an offer until they actually remember the bar and are qualified through the city process. But we've told them, assuming you pass the bar, assuming you go through the process, we will have you a position at the city attorney's office. And last year, we got--
We had our eight.
So we, we are bringing, that's one of the things that the county is committing to, to try to bring them in to the city prosecutor's office by bringing them early, letting them have the experience, let them understand the culture of the office, let them understand, you know, the advantages of working at the city and then potentially working for our office. But again, I don't know how we do that if someone's, again, and please remember, we are only talking about being competitive with the Attorney General's Office and our office. We're not even remotely talking about what the private sector is paying now and what the market has done to the private sector, which is, blows all of this remotely--
Our engineers will--
If we remotely came close to the private sector, we would be, we would all have a very different, a different number.
Sorry, just, what I'm trying to get at is that we added, I don't remember if it was last year or the year before, but we added either one or two prosecutors. But if you've been able to work through having as many vacancies as you have, you know, is it possible that we increase for, you know, to fill, but we don't fill all the vacancies? is it possible that we increase for, you know, to fill, but we don't fill all the vacancies? Can you continue to carry that? You've been carrying that workload?
Yeah, well, that, I think that's being very.
I know that's not ideal, I don't want that either, but I can't make the money appear.
No, no, I completely get it. And I think, I think what everybody is sharing here is the difficulty of where we are, and I completely appreciate the position that you find yourself in. The goal here is to have a very open, honest, transparent conversation, so we all own the decisions that we make, and that is the reality. And sometimes you have to make some hard decisions, and then the best decisions that are available to all of us, myself included and yourself included in that. And so I'm sharing with you what we would.
I think that was an important question, though, what the council member, and I think it's, we understand that there's a competition in the market, and if you can make a certain amount more, you're going to choose that over the city prosecutor's office. But the question is, if we're not able to find all of the money to do that, and we can, let's say, for instance, we could go to 95% of the market for all of your 16 positions, or we could go to 100% of the market, but only do 14 positions, which would be preferred?
So, so.
What you just said.
The second one.
The second.
Yeah, because I think, I think that as long as, as long as there is a commitment to say that, I hope that I find myself where all those positions are filled, and then I can come to you and say, hey, I got two more positions I need to fill, but I can't fill them because I need an extra $40,000 or whatever. I would love to be in that position. So to answer your question, I need parity to actually be able to fill the position. So I would prefer the 14, and if you say, look, Sim, we need to get through the next six months or next two, nine months or whatever, so we'll leave the door open when you need to come back, if you need to fill those, whatever, then, I think that's a, that's a good, that's a good solution, because then the ones that I'm hiring, I'm hiring at the competitive level, and I need that. If I don't have that, I can't even fill the 10 positions.
Right, yeah, thank you.
I think.
Thank you for clarifying.
And that helps answer.
Can I, because I think you hit on a very important point. I mean, like Sim said, we currently have, you know, eight prosecutors, and we have two out on maternity leave, and, you know, we have six people doing the work of what should be 14. And it's kind of back to the point you made, is at some point, you don't have work-life balance, you're so overworked, you're so overwhelmed, it may not matter how much money you give, you give them, if they recognize that they're incapable of actually doing the work. And so we're trying to say, at least we can, it would be a huge morale, morale boost, at least say, this is what's happening, we're going to continue to work and continue to vigorously recruit, continue to vigorously develop people to come in and help with that workload, because it's just, at some point, it's not sustainable. And that's the difficulty for these brand-new lawyers that are overwhelmed.
I think that gives us the information we need to deliberate this. Thank you for answering that question.
Thank you.
Any last thoughts or seeing, okay, thank you for being here, thank you for helping us work through that, those questions. We're going to go to a break, let's take 20 minutes, it is 3:20, so we'll come back at 3:40 from break.
Dan, we're a minute early.
We're a minute early. This is like, this is like platinum, diamond stars that get on our forehead.
Wait, Dan, what was your rank when you retired?
Commander.
Okay, I think we should, when you remind me of the time, I'll be like, yes, commander.
Yes, commander. Okay, so we have a very large list of unresolved issues. I think what we'd like, what I'd like to do is have Jennifer go through the housing-related items, because it sounds like those may be able to be funded outside of the general fund. We're still waiting on final new growth numbers and some other numbers as well, or that's really the one we're waiting on?
That's really the main one.
So that could drastically change what we are able to and not able to fund, so let's start with the ones that we don't have to wait for those numbers on, which is housing. Is that all right with everyone? Okay.
And I sent this an email to you guys yesterday, last night, last night, but I'll just kind of go over just the basics. So all of this, I'll just preface this by saying, all of this is possible because of the administration's willingness to engage with both community neighborhoods and RDA to think about ways to proactively fund these items. It's unusual and not required for the administration to do that, and it's been very helpful, and I think it's a mutual beneficial thing, because I think those are projects that are in line with their goals, and then they have proposals for other funds that, you know, they didn't want to necessarily upset. And so this is a way to think strategically about how all of the proposals can be funded. The kind of root of the ability to fund all of these is thinking about which funds were flexible and which funds had more strings, and kind of starting from that point, figuring out which items needed those flexible funds, so like which ideas fit neatly into one of the categories that had a bunch of strings, and which of the projects did not fit neatly into categories that had a lot of strings. And the conclusion they came to is that the funding that had been proposed in the mayor's budget for the NOFA, the Notice of Funding Availability, that sort of general once-a-year call for ideas, was actually the most flexible funding, because ultimately, it was funded with general fund dollars. Now, the council and the mayor wouldn't want to just not fund the NOFA, so then the next question became, how can, how else can the NOFA be funded? And what CAN realized is that there were quite a bit of dollars in their dormant HUD funds, these are those funds that we talked about last budget year, that were sitting in accounts, and they have a few million in those accounts that actually have to be spent, so sort of like a time clock on them. HUD is requiring us to spend them by, I think it's the next calendar year on housing development. And so what the administration realized is that it would actually be advantageous to use those funds for the NOFA instead of the general fund dollars, just for this one fiscal year, so that we could comply with HUD's requirement that we spend those monies on housing development. And then also, it frees up the flexible dollars that were originally proposed in the mayor's budget to go to the NOFA.
And that's about 3 million that we can supplant?
It was about 4.7 million.
4.7.
Yeah, and so, and I wouldn't use the word supplant necessarily, but, you know, just, I think aligning dollars with allowable uses. So I think.
Recategorize?
Recategorize, yeah.
Let's use that one.
Yeah, recategorize. So with that in mind, I, maybe I'll start with the council proposal that actually did fit well with some of the dormant HUD funds, was the loan program for naturally occurring affordable housing. So what, and the chart in the staff report says recommended funding source, but it really should just say like, staff-level recommendation, obviously, this is subject to your guys' discussion, but I think to your point earlier, this is all, these are all non-general fund dollars, these are all funds that are elsewhere.
Can you remind me of how much of those dormant funds we're talking about?
So there's about 12 million in the current budget, and it has grown, because they're earning interest on some of the programs, to about 14 million. Quite a few of those funds have very long strings, they relate to federal tracking and reporting and things like that. The administration is transmitting, I think they're planning on transmitting today, a proposal with how to spend all of that money, and this is included in that. So I think they appreciated having your guys' list of what you hoped and desired for housing, because it allowed them to kind of take stock of what could fit in those dormant HUD funds.
When you say this, are you talking about 23, or are you talking about several of these projects?
So the council actually recognized the money in the fiscal year 23 budget, so it's sitting there as unallocated money. But the reason it's unallocated is because of all the strings and requirements that are needed to actually get the money released. So the proposal is to budget, include this loan program for naturally occurring affordable housing in the fiscal year 24 budget, because there is money sitting there that is eligible to be used for this project. Does that make sense?
But it doesn't have to come from the 24, the general fund?
Right.
Because it's coming from the money that we recognized last year?
Right.
From HUD.
Yes, so in your sort of tracking sheet, you could say that it's checked off, right, like it's funded, but it's not funded with your general fund balancing number, right, that number that we always.
Naturally occurring affordable housing, and that's $1 million as sort of an initial amount?
Right.
I think that's, I would like to support that.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to support as well, I think it's a big deal. I appreciate councilmember Waldemar's bringing this up. I do have a concern about, this is a new program, how we're going to implement a new program, not, again, not that this is a good idea, this is a great idea, but since the money is, has deadlines, my question is, could it be the money be used maybe on some other of these ideas, and something that we can implement faster?
So this, this section of the dormant HUD funds does not have those funding deadlines. So.
Fantastic.
And so within the proposal, and we just got a message from CAN, that they did send that transmittal over today. So the section of funds that they, that do have deadlines are proposed to be transferred to the RDA for the NOFA, and so they will get spent within the year. And that's why the NOFA is a good option for those funds, because it gets the funds out right away.
That's the answer to the question, thank you.
But I want to kind of piggyback on the question, because it does take staff to in a program, you got to, like, what's, what's, what's the repair limit, how do we choose programs, and is RDA, whoever's going to administer?
CAN is going to administer this one, right?
Does CAN have this current staff to administer this program? And I would say probably the next one, well, I think.
We can follow up with staff on that.
Jen, we can follow, sorry, but when I met with the mayor and staff, they said that this was one of the ones that they could easily implement, because they already do their home, I get this, I understood it right, they already do home repair, similar to this, so they're going to mimic that. But this, the difference between just a home repair is that now there is a hook. So yeah, we'll loan you the money as long as you keep it affordable for 15 years or whatever it is the loan length, and also that we get first right of refusal. If at some point they want to sell before this is paid off, or at the time it's paid off, then the city picks that, or has a chance to pick up that property for our community land trust.
And what we would typically do with a new, what we would typically do with a new program is ask the administration to come back with the details, once they've figured out all those details, and so we could just clarify that in the adoption documents, that, you know, you're allocating this money with this policy goal, and the administration will return with a proposal.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anna, are we convinced that 1 million is the right number for a pilot program?
I'm convinced, I mean, I said, you know, I, I'm thinking if we can do 50,000 longer, oh, I'm not going to tell the administration exactly what.
But what you envision when you propose this is?
Yeah.
Is 50,000 dollar repairs on average for houses?
Yeah, maybe for a roof, and maybe here, the architect can, can tell us how, what those costs are.
I'm not sure a 50,000 dollar loan, maybe a zero-interest loan for 50,000 dollars would be enough of a carrot. But with everyone in, with the, I said, appraised values having gone up so high, everyone has access to so much potential home equity line of credit, that I'm, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that it would or would not result in people saying, yeah, I'd rather take this 50,000 because it has a lower interest rate, and agree to put caps on my deed restrictions on my property. I don't know if that's a big enough carrot, but I think a million dollars is a good amount of money to put in the budget to ask CAN staff to figure out what the size of the carrot needs to be.
Also, then, are we considering alternative credit ratings? Are we, are we attempting to target the people who might not qualify for traditional home equity loans because of traditional credit scores or things like this?
I don't have those details, but for sure, it wasn't my intention for somebody that could acquire or has, you know, an income level this high, but I'm thinking, if I look at my district, I know a lot of older folks, and maybe are in fixed incomes, could potentially use that money to fix their home, and, you know, and maybe they rent part of it or whatever, and stay there, or, you know, or be able to.
To function as a homelessness prevention element, the people who are most at risk of losing homes probably have credit impaired by medical bills that are outstanding, things that are keeping a traditional credit score low. But, you know, I know there's a lot of work being done right now in the private sector, both at Sorenson Impact Center, at Swazoo, at a whole bunch of different things that look at, how do we maintain some sense of credit worthiness, a realistic expectation that we can recuperate funds without relying on a traditional, you know, experience credit score.
I think we're giving, getting a little into the weeds. Too far into the weeds, I think the point is, what level do we want to fund the program at?
I just want to make sure a million is the right number.
Mr. Chair, I think that Jennifer just sent a text, the CAN and the transmittal recommends 1.2 million dollars for this program. I'm okay supporting that to that level from that, and then, and then we can.
And we can come back and get into those details.
The details, too.
Thank you.
But the point is, supporting people that are housed but need help with the repairs.
Or property owners that are renting at an affordable level, at affordable meaning, you know, not deeply affordable, but also not market rate, like, because maybe it's an older home or whatever, and needs repairs, and that's why it's cheaper, that's not making sense.
I'm seeing pretty general support of the idea. So let's go on to the next one, which is ADU incentives.
So I'm actually going to switch to this chart.
Oh, okay.
And it's, I don't have it printed out, but this is what I sent around, and I can forward it to the recorder's office, so, sorry about that. This is just showing how the pot of money of flexible dollars, which was originally funded in the, for the NOFA, in the mayor's recommended budget, is funding a grouping of projects that, for one reason or another, need a little bit more flexibility in the funding source. And I can talk through each one and why it needs a little bit more flexibility in the funding source. So, but you'll see that the total amount that was originally recommended in the mayor's budget for the NOFA was just over 4.2, just under 4.3 million. And the total amount for uses doesn't quite add up to that, and so maybe the council's discussion could, you know, balance that out, like maybe increasing funding here or there. Anyway, the first item is the NeighborWorks partnership, and originally, the discussion was to fund this from the Westside Community Initiative. There are challenges with that, based on the mix of income AMI targets in the end product of the project, and the Westside Community Initiative, because it's funded through the inland port, has a statutory requirement that it be 80% or below AMI. And that's a statutory requirement. So, sorry, go ahead.
No, sorry, I think, so we already know what NeighborWorks wants, the different incomes that NeighborWorks wants to work?
Yes, and I think their idea is a mix, and it would be a third, 80% AMI or below, a third, 80 to 120, and a third, market rate. And to their credit, the administration thought, well, could you fund a third of it with this or not? And you could, but ultimately, that felt more complicated than you needed to be, especially when you had flexible dollars otherwise.
I, it seems complicated, and I know I hate adding complications, but I feel like I would like to at least tap on some of that money and actually get a known provider, a known entity, not only on the West Side, but in the city as a whole. So if we can actually hybridize this funding from some of this more flexible dollars, but also from the, I just want to have one good example from that West Side money that we're saving.
They're saying, have, it's important to you to use Westside Community Initiative funding for a project that you can stand behind and believe in, and this is one?
And hopefully, you know.
So 700,000 essentially, for the third that qualifies from the Westside Community Initiative, and then the remaining 14, 1.4 million from these flexible funds.
And me, I'm saying this just because of, from a, you know, standpoint that I'm coming from, I'm trying to make a case about this, but again, if it's too complex and too, I think I prefer to do that, but I leave it up to you.
We can follow up with RDA staff to see if that makes sense. I think that this is one of the projects that because RDA staff and CAN have not been engaged with the partner, with NeighborWorks on a spreadsheet level, they still needed to engage with NeighborWorks on a term sheet, kind of the standard, you know, discussions with the city. And so maybe that's part of their future discussions, but I think that we could, we could work with the RDA to put like a placeholder in both areas, both the Westside Community Initiative and the Housing Development Program, to fund that.
Okay. All right.
And the next item, sorry, just noting that, the next item is the citywide ADU incentive program, and the reason that, after further looking, the administration was thinking that those needed more flexible dollars is because we don't know where or what. needed more flexible dollars is because we don't know where or what AMI the person who is building the ADU might be, nor do we know what their AMI might change to once they have an ADU and might be using it for an income generating property, right? And so rather than having to kind of torture the homeowner with all those hoops, with these flexible dollars, it can be whatever program you want it to be. So that's a million there.
I like that.
Then gap financing for the Switchpoint project. Again, not knowing whether it's an, so we knew a little, we know a little bit more now, which is that it's not building housing units, but it's expanding services to support that housing. And these flexible dollars don't have any requirements about housing units must be built. And then the next item is the sanctioned camping grant that I think we've discussed before, and I think the same reasoning applies of why flexible dollars make sense to use here.
I actually would propose that we invert these and do 250 to Switchpoint since it's not for the structure, it's for program, I might be contributing to it, but I'd rather see 500 in, for the program that we were describing on the meeting with the administration.
And if we.
Program that you're describing, the sanctioned camping?
So, yeah, so would you like to describe it a little bit for the people who didn't get to be in our meeting yesterday? I really love this concept.
I, I mean, unfortunately, I remember I dropped halfway through, I couldn't connect back again to, to this, to the call. So I'm not completely sure, I'm caught up on the final thought on this, maybe Cindy?
It's just, it's just, I think if you just described your proposal.
My proposal, okay, yeah. So the, the general idea behind this is to create some sort of grant mechanism within the city for providers, you know, whatever size of provider you are, to be able to access some of this money, all of it or some of it, to start a sanction campaign in or out the city. And those details, I guess we are, we're willing to, you know, we, therefore to discuss. But hopefully the grant is a match grant. So if you are asking us for $20,000, you are able to get $20,000 from the county or the state to match those, those monies to be able to, to start this process. And I just want to make sure that there is not that many barriers as far as funding to create this other resource for those that are unsheltered. And I think it is the right way to go. Again, we don't take ownership on this issue as far as, you know, we are not running the camp, we are not in charge of, responsible for its success. Obviously, we want it to succeed, but we are just putting some, setting some money aside that it could be access. And I'm, I'm hoping the administration will come up with maybe our input about a mechanism and some ties to how you access this money.
So you're, you're hope, and you're hoping for the private sector to step up through this. So maybe a church willing to set aside a corner of their property to put 10 campers on, asking the city for some money, asking another entity, private or public, for money that matches it.
Correct.
To then help slowly but surely get some people into places with safety. My only caveat would be anyone who gets it, I would, even though we're not responsible for it, I would like us to have a code of certain things that we expect them to abide by. We did have a tragedy when someone tried to do this out of best intentions. And so making sure like, you know, there's some basic information about safety and, you know, things that we expect to protect human life. But I love this activation of letting people in small ways do their part to try to start helping.
We're going to have to deal with land use issues though.
Yeah.
As well. Right, I mean, that's not.
I'll stand in that headwind for us, I'm fine with that. Churches might be.
Churches would be exempt, I would have thought.
And Denver, again, I always go back to Denver because this is one of the places that I visited the most, but I also see this in Seattle when I visited some of their camps in there. But in Denver, they started in churches. And they rotated them and churches, you know, signed up for this and they said, okay, we're going to have 10 tents. And they did it through COVID and they started some tents in their, in their, in their parking lots. And it was their decision to do and they ran it and they were successful. It was almost like the pilot program of the safe outdoor spaces that I, we visited with council member Fowler and Valdemoros last time and before with council member Petro.
Okay, I mean, I think this falls a little bit into the same category as put some money in and figure out exactly the details later. I'm not opposed to switching Switchpoint down to 250 and sanction camping up to 500 if other council members agree to that.
I'm okay with switching it, but this is one of those, the devil is in the details on this stuff. And right now we're looking at a pilot program, working with the state and the state funding a lot of things and putting a lot of guardrails into the program, just like we did the guardrails when we did the Ramado last year, the year before. So we need to be very cautious on this because we could, this could actually get derailed and we could have some, a lot of issues with the smaller campgrounds and throughout the city that we actually have now. So I would, I want to make sure that we study with this and I'm getting into details, so.
I mean, I think it's, I, I agree with you, Councilman Dugan, I think it's, we're putting $500,000 towards the belief that there's something there.
Yeah.
In this model that is better than what we have.
And I'm okay with having the money there.
If they want to take a couple RVs off the street, that would help our district tremendously. The bound, the tension we're balancing is that we are already at late summer levels with issues in our district. And we have, we're not even zeroing in on the property yet for the state solution. We need to, we need to incentivize the private sector to do what they do.
Okay. Yes, we, we need to be cautious on this one, but I understand.
I, yeah, I'm not, what I've seen from, I, I didn't get a chance to go to the Denver trip and I haven't seen, but I did see the pictures there and I admit it was impressive. It was, made me more, want to hear more about it. But I still have reservations that I brought up with you, I don't know if we've talked about them yet. But before I'm ready to vote for this, even at the, the amount that's being proposed, I really need to know more. And so those of you that feel really strongly that, that putting this aside is going to make a difference, I hope we can set aside time to talk because I, I'm not there yet.
Appreciate that, Councilmember Warden.
I agree and I, I hope that, you know, we definitely have more to catch up, but I'm, maybe we hope, I'm hoping that with this money, we, we do the same that we did with, with all the program that we are funding, that 1.2 million dollars, is that we ask the administration to come up with, you know, maybe some guardrails to protect, you know, our stance with the state, the county, but also, you know, with those residents within the camps and with the community and how it all fits. So I'm hoping that we, we can pan that question, but we should definitely talk.
What I heard from Councilmember Warden though is that it sounds like you're more comfortable with the 1.2 for naturally occurring, with figuring out the guardrails later and less comfortable with this one before budget. Is that, is that what you were saying? Okay. And, and Councilman Dugan's the same?
Yes, or like another potential scenario that, you know, we could talk through. I'm open to hearing like a number of different things, but I, I, I need to be, I need you to help me like touch the magic.
And I'm probably somewhere in the middle.
Okay.
From where Petro and Puy are and Dugan and Warden. I, I, I feel pretty comfortable with it, but I would love that additional information. But it sounds like we have a couple council members asking maybe those conversations can happen offline.
Would it be helpful for you guys to get on an airplane, a hundred dollars run trip to Denver, go check it and then come back? Like see it for yourselves because it did help me and, and we leveraged with another traveling trip that we had, like we weren't, that wasn't in our agenda, but we decided, I decided to go to actually see it with my own eyes because I could not, I could not understand in my mind how sanction, you know, safe outdoor space or sanction could work. I've always said that I was super hesitant for the longest period of time, but going and seeing it myself, showing up and announced.
Yeah.
It was, it was eye opening for me. So in, in a run trip to Denver, it could be a hundred bucks, you know, for a couple hours, go fly in, go check it out, come back.
Okay, but can we, I mean, I think, I think we, I think we've, we understand where every council member's at on this issue and it sounds like no one's an absolute no, so there's just a little bit more conversation needs to happen before budget adoption.
On these, on these things, aren't we essentially voting for placeholders though until, like, like for the NOAA, we're essentially voting for 1.2 million as a placeholder until CAN develops the terms. But it's essentially until they come up with the terms and then come back to us and we say, yes, this is what we're envisioning or we need this here. It's, it's, that's what we're doing with all this money, right?
The answer is yes, but what I'm hearing is there's two council members that are not yet even comfortable putting the placeholder in and that I'm somewhere in the middle.
And I have a question for Jen, you moved stuff around, like you moved the NOAA to dormant HUD funds that have more requirements. And I thought that, how did that change from it was higher in the flexible dollar?
No, no, it, it, this is a different sheet.
Oh, okay.
Than the one we're, than the one that's in your staff report. This is just going through sources and uses. And so the dormant, the dormant HUD funds and, and, you know, it's more requirements than the general fund, but not more requirements than the really strict HUD funds.
Okay, all right.
It, it's not higher or lower in priority, it's just sources and uses.
Okay, but, but, but it's always been there in the dormant HUD funds that have requirements?
No, this is just as of yesterday, so.
So what we're doing, we asked the administration if they could please help us with, if you, if you just were making the best decisions you can with the right sources, if you're matching up the sources and uses in the most efficient way that you can, not putting extra strings on anything that can't take strings, but putting, putting this, matching the strings with the needs. That's, that's what they did and they really worked a long time with Jennifer, they had already worked it through and then they worked some more on it with Jennifer. So this is stuff like, the, the type of strings on that are things like needs to relate to housing. Or, you know, so the.
Whereas like general fund dollars don't need to be spent on housing.
Yeah, so simple stuff. So we're pretty confident.
So this is this sheet you were looking at before.
Okay, yeah.
It's just different ways to show the same information.
The tricky one is, is the partnership with Neighbor Works. That's the trickiest, but other than that, these are.
Right.
And the Neighbor Works partnership is proposed for the most flexible dollars.
Right, it's proposed for the, those general fund dollars. The reason I wanted to share this version, I'm sorry, is just to point out that the total does not, you don't, you're not spending all that money.
We still have 440.
So you still have 440,000. Your options with that are use them to balance the general fund because they are general fund dollars, they started as general fund dollars. Or you could increase the RDA's NOFA because that's what they were originally proposed for.
Next count, next section RD has it increased by quite a bit.
Yes, yes. And that's as a result of the CAN and RDA collaborating and realizing that that was a really efficient way.
Good way to use those dollars and the amount of dollars available for that use is actually 600.
Six point, yes, yeah. So, or you could add money to any of those projects above.
I mean, I feel pretty comfortable with all the, personally, all the things that we've talked about so far. So I, I would sort of think let's use it to balance the general fund personally, but.
Okay, but what about the request that council member Puy had on the senior center?
That's the last one here.
That's the last one. So I guess one way to describe it is each box is a different pot of money.
Okay.
So the pot of money that's funding the, the naturally occurring affordable housing loan program and now the pot of money that's funding the RDA NOFA are these dormant HUD funds. And that's the transmittal that we just got today. So two items within the transmittal we got today are using those dollars. For the Sunday Anderson Senior Center, there are RDA housing funds that are, because it's a housing project and because the income can be restricted appropriate to the project and because it's in a project area, it qualifies for multiple.
Okay.
RDA housing fund dollars that are already in the budget. So there is 1 million dollars in the secondary housing fund that was originally proposed for housing property acquisition. And then 1, 1 million 13,000 in the primary housing fund that was originally proposed to be shared equity housing that the board could decide to allocate towards this project.
What would that be taking away from? I realize property acquisition of properties we yet to be determined.
And I don't know, let's see, Danny's here and he could jump up and clarify, but in our discussions, there wasn't a specific project in mind for that. It was just putting money there because those were both priorities, priorities of the board.
Okay.
Let me.
Go ahead, Councilmember Puy.
I, I, I was pleased to, to hear that the administration, you know, was supportive of this, this, this plan and, and in general supportive of some of these funding mechanisms to, to get there. So it is not only, you know, this random council member's idea, but it is more about, it seems like the stars are aligning to make this project happen. So just wanted to add up there.
I, I think it's a good idea, having housing on that lot. It seems like there's enough place, space for housing. It does seem like there's, that like it's an idea worth figuring out. It sort of feels to me like, I guess I've, I've, I've been hired and paid by enough clients that had really good ideas on lots that seemed like they were totally going to make sense. And then you found a situation where it was completely impossible to do something. So I'm wondering, is there a mechanism to say, yes, look at this, we'll like earmark this for this project, but if you can't figure out a feasible project proposal in the next six months or year, then we re, like reroute it, reallocate it to the.
I mean, it will have.
General fund or something.
I think that would naturally.
It will have to be like that.
It would, yeah, my understanding is that because the county is using their ARPA dollars, it would need to be figured out by middle of next year at the earliest or at the latest. And so RDA funds don't drop to fund balance and so.
Has the county already committed ARPA dollars for that site?
Our understanding is they have because I guess the senior center is in need of reconstruction and so they're using ARPA dollars to make that happen.
So context on this, the county allocated some money, I believe it's six to seven million dollars to remodel the building inside, but ideally it could be something else. And if they, in my opinion, if they put that money in remodeling the insides of the building, we're stuck with that building for another 20 years. So I'm developing this lot, you know, and all the things that, so this could be the opportunity, the incentive is there.
Okay, so we put it in, in, let's say we do it, we put it in there, the county, the county or whoever, county owns the land, right?
Yes.
So the county can figure out what they're proposing to do. Do they come back to us at some point and say, here's what we're proposing? Or just like, we put housing and it was four giant mansions? Like how do, how do, what guardrails do we put on to make sure that the kind of housing that supports the community?
I'm speculating, but I think what would happen is the RDA staff would work with county staff to figure out what is needed. My guess, just this basic guess, is that 2 million probably would not be enough to put housing. And so that would be the natural step, at which point they would say, based on preliminary design or based on preliminary conversations about how the county and city will share funding strategy, and maybe the county would put in more based on, you know, further conversations. Right now their, their increment contribution to the nine line is quite limited based on the original conversations. And so they could put more increment from that property on, into it. Anyway, I think it's accurate maybe to say that the RDA staff would work on that and come back to the board because this amount probably isn't the final amount. Or is it the final amount?
But I was, what I put on the sense, like they already allocated 7 million dollars, like at least they're completing 7 million dollars to do something with a property, but maybe not just to rebuild it, but to fix it, but maybe it's like, well, this is new construction, this is new housing and maybe we can ask the city to contribute a little bit.
I guess my question, maybe, let me ask a separate question. Secondary housing fund money and primary housing fund money, do those have deadlines? Those do not, right?
No, but they have requirements about and limitations about where the money can be spent and what AMI.
Okay.
Is served.
Okay.
And that's why this project kind of fit well.
That's good.
Because it's in a project area and, and it's.
But I guess I'm saying like just the number of months that it takes to get a housing project going, I'm.
The bigger challenge, honestly, the bigger challenge is the county's money, not our money.
Yes, I have, I have a medium level of confidence that something could actually happen before the county has to spend their money on those interior remodels. But I'm okay putting some money in there, saying, trying to figure out something better. And if you can't, at least we still know we can use these dollars.
Right.
That, that makes me more comfortable with this.
And I just want to confirm this, all this is not coming out of the general fund?
Right.
Okay.
Housing fund.
Yes, this is, this is money that's in the RD, sorry, it's in the RDA budget, so.
This is, all, all these funds are coming out of the third column on the housing fund column side.
Right. Which is either, yeah, which is either the dormant HUD funds or I should have put in the title, RDA housing.
Yeah, it's, it's all the housing funding, not the general fund. Everything we've just talked about is coming out of everything besides the general fund.
Yep.
Because I, I think there was some little confusion back there on the sanctioned camping and some other things about, since they're flexible, they're coming out of the general fund.
Well, okay, so if you want to be really technical.
Because I, I do want to be technical.
Technically, yes, okay, to be technical, sorry, to be technical. Technically, yes. Okay. To be technical, sorry, to be technical, you're right. Those are, they originated as general fund dollars. They were, but they're funding our future dollars. There's a combination of funding our future dollars and dollars that are in excess of what's needed to fund the North Temple Viaduct Debt Service. And the board had previously had the desire to keep that extra money in the area. That's why the partnership with Neighbor Works kind of works for that funding. But the other funding, the funding our future money, which is 2.6 ish million, was originally general fund dollars that was sent to the RDA for the purpose of the NOFA. The proposal would be to keep it in RDA, just use different purpose, use it for a different purpose.
Right. Because I'm just trying to make sure that people understand that the general fund and our fund balance isn't being impacted.
Yes. Fund balance is not part of this discussion.
Correct. So the fund balance isn't being impacted by these funding requests.
That's accurate.
Okay. I, I want to try throwing something out there. Can we pull up that same sheet that you just had?
Yep.
I would propose a straw poll that we support this sheet with the changes to being that switch point gap goes down, gap finance goes down 250.
It's updated.
Up there, yeah. Oh, that's already been switched.
Yes.
That we hold on the sanctioned camping ground, we can have a more, a bigger discussion about that in a separate straw poll. That the, but that the other, the remaining of these, we support from the proposed sources that Jennifer just said. And I would propose that those 440 or 940 if we don't do the.
So it would actually be more. I haven't changed the funding for the West Side Community Initiative. So just hold.
Okay. Yep. Let's hold on.
Or from the West Side.
While she's doing that, do we think in good faith, we have time to actually discuss the sanctioned camping? Or can we request for a placeholder and then discuss it after budget? I just, if there's, if there's time, I'm fine with it. I just don't want to lose the possibility of a good idea acknowledging that additional clarification is needed.
I guess my, my intention right now is to straw poll everything that I think we have consensus on. And then we can propose an additional straw poll for that one item. It was my intention and that could be.
I mean, I think that there's, okay, okay, go ahead.
I, I think we have consensus on everything but one. So I, I would like to straw poll all of those items first, if that's all right. We might not, but. Okay. So that's 2.1 million dollars for Neighbor Works Partnership. Oh.
It's 1.4.
1.4 million for Neighbor Works Partnership from general fund, 700 from West Side Community Initiative, 100,000 for ADU incentives.
Million.
1 million, thank you, for ADU incentives, 250 for switch point gap financing, 1.2 million for the naturally occurring affordable loan program coming from the dormant HUD funds, and 6.47 from the dormant HUD funds being used to fund the NOFA at a, at a rate higher than in the mayor's proposed budget. So that gives 6.476014. And then 2.0138204.
Can I, sorry, can I insert just new information? Just a quick conversation with Danny just now, that funding for this project, it might make sense to pull, it might make sense to pull from this project also from the West Side Community Initiative. Maybe we could.
Are we saying this project being Sunday Anderson?
Mm-hmm. Sorry, the Sunday Anderson partnership. Could we maybe broaden it and say, RDA housing sources?
Okay.
And then that way the straw poll could be whatever technical.
I think that's great. Okay. Okay. So the, the Sunday Anderson, as noted on the sheet, would be, would be sourced from RDA housing sources, whichever is the most appropriate. And then the remaining, well, I propose that we don't, this straw poll does not touch the remaining 1.4. Let's.
Okay.
Does that make sense? That was, sorry, that did not go over.
So straw poll for.
It makes sense to me.
Everything is highlighted.
Highlighted.
Yes. That's a really smart way to do it.
Highlighted.
Everything highlighted in yellow. Does everyone, does everyone understand that?
Yes.
Okay. Who, please indicate with your thumb if you support the things that are highlighted. Okay. So that is six to zero supporting those items. Does anyone want to propose a separate straw poll for the remaining items?
I, I want to ask a question to Jen before we proposed anything else. So on, on the sanctioned camping, I didn't understand that we were moving 250 to that one to make it 500,000. But if that was the case.
I think that's what Councilmember Pietro proposed.
Councilmember Pietro proposed.
All right.
But I think that, that needs to be.
That still, yeah, needs to be straw polled. But, but, but let's say, let's say it was 250, we left it as before, and then we have 1.4 million dollars left over, the flexible dollars remaining. Would that be, would, can we put that money into the general fund or it stays in somewhat of a housing limbo fund because of dormant?
I think it depends on how you view the, how strictly you view the previous intention for both the funding our future dollars and the North Temple Viaduct funding. Because from a purely technical standpoint, there's not a requirement that you spend funding our future dollars on RDA stuff, right? Like it's for general housing. And so, or any of the funding our future categories. So you could technically count that money as general fund dollars, but you have to spend it on a funding our future category thing. Or you could, technically, legally, you are allowed to spend funding our future dollars on anything. It's just that you've made a commitment to the taxpayers that you'll track it. The other thing that it depends on how strictly you view your prior policy direction was that 1.7 million dollars from the North Temple Viaduct Debt Service. There's not a requirement that you spend it in the area or that you spend it on housing. It's just a payment from the RDA to the general fund to pay us back for debt service that we covered to rebuild the viaduct initially. So I guess, I guess, I guess it's, yes, yes, you can put it back in the general fund. You may want it to be directed towards funding our future categories if you wanted to stay true to those original policy intentions.
Are those 1.4 or 1.1.1.39?
That's, that's moving the camping down to 250.
Is that, that's from funding our future, which is ongoing?
Yes.
Okay. So this would help.
Well, it's also from, you could, I mean, it's all mingled together.
It's also from North Temple.
North Temple Viaduct.
Which is one time.
Well, it has been ongoing for several years that there has been more increment there than is needed to fund the debt service. So I'm, I'm not confident that 1.7 will be available every year, but some amount of money will be available every year.
Can, just for my clarification, can we be put funding our future, just write at that 1.14? The flexible dollars remain, just like, hey, either you have funding our future so we know it's not, yeah. That helps me.
Yep.
Sorry.
Legally, it's flexible. Policy wise.
Policy wise.
It may not be.
Right, right.
Right there.
Well, and there are quite a few items on, there's a few items on the list that I think depending on your definition of public safety, might, might be eligible for funding our future, like some of the things. So, or, or housing or transportation.
I, I guess councilmember, do you want to talk more about sanctioned camping right now? Or?
That's what I was going to go to. I wonder if we should have an opportunity to chat and to try to answer some of these questions before we, it seems like there is a general understanding of what maybe this is, but the details is where we are getting caught up a little bit. And I need to work on a little more of the details, again, knowing that I'm hopefully ask the administration to come up with many of these details, but maybe we are going to create some boundaries. So if that's okay with everybody, can we punt this specific question on sanctioned camping to the next?
Next unresolved issues discussion.
Can I ask though?
This budget season.
Can I, wait, we're going to do it before we do budget? Or you want to?
I think the proposal is to wait until the next time, like in a week.
Like in a week. Okay, sorry.
Not in a year.
But can I ask the council people who have concerns, what specifically are you asking for? Because this feels to me like we're at a similar level as what we're suggesting with the NOAA. And so if there's specific information that we can be refining or marinating on or working with you to get to a place, I'd like to do that. But it feels like we delegate details to staff all the time.
Hey, I can answer that for myself.
Yeah.
I, I think the, the NOAA feels like totally in line with the things that we already do, which is support homeowners, get affordable housing units, dedicated, deed restrictions. And I, I don't see any land use or public safety layers to the discussion where with the sanctioned camping, I, I think sanctioned camping, it needs, I'm totally supportive of us having this conversation, having it being part of our broad puzzle of solutions. But I think there are those additional layers that I want just some time to think about, which are, what are the impacts? What public safety issues? What are the land use laws that need to be overcome in order for a person to even be allowed to do that? Is it something that lasts permanently? Or do we, do we need to, like, for instance, do we need to put in a six month temporary land use ordinance to allow this to happen, which then naturally allows it to rotate to different places? I, I don't know exactly how that works. I think we can figure it out, but there are just more, more questions than there are with the NOAA.
Now, I could just add a tiny bit, if I may. And that is that yesterday we had a meeting with three of the council members, councilmember Puy, Pietro, and Baldomaros and the mayor. And I think it worked out really well. She was not opposed to having some sort of incentive, but was interested in participating with the council members in a meeting with Wayne Nederhauser with the state so that we keep the state role and the city role and the county role clarified. And that we ask him for more information about what would help him get over the barriers that he's facing and that type of thing. So I think we're on the right path to get more information and we should have more by next week.
Yeah, that meeting's tomorrow?
At what time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think, I think, I'll speak for myself, but I think all of us would probably appreciate a recap or information that is.
Well, this helps us. This helps us.
We can talk about that at the next public meeting or whenever.
Well, this helps us go into the discussion, gathering or solidifying points that would easier. Chris, did you have something?
Can I just add on the, on the idea that the Denver model really looks good now? The Miami model also looks really good to us and we have a lot of things, but they've been doing it for 20 years. Denver might also have been doing it for, so what is their lessons learned on how they got to where they are? Because they didn't just show up there and it was magically there. They probably had some iterations. So part of, part of the discussion that we have here is that let's learn from them so we can leap forward, but let's not think that we can just leap right to their position now because.
Yeah. And I agree. And I acknowledge that. And I think obviously what we have right now going on with the unsanctioned campaign is not ideal. And this is trying to minimize that.
Absolutely. I agree with you there. And that's why the discussion with Wayne is so important. Yes. Okay.
Have we done?
Oh, let's go to scheduling before people start leaving. Oh, we were supposed to do that already. Sorry, effort.
That's okay. So our meeting that we were having on the eighth is really not going to work based on councilmember schedules. And we're also worried that we won't have the numbers from the state in time. So we wanted to know if there's any chance that you could meet on Monday, June 12th, sometime in the afternoon, anytime after 1:00 PM. The fallback would be June 9th, but we're, that one's not as good in terms of getting, being sure we have accurate information from the state. Then while you're thinking about that, the other thing is that in order to fill the District 7 vacancy that will be here in July, we need to add a meeting in July. Your meetings so far are the 11th and 18th. The chair and vice chair, we're looking at adding a meeting on the 25th. Hopefully what we could do is switch the formal business to that meeting, but use the 18th of July to, to fill the vacancy. Thank you. And councilmember Fowler, if we do it on this timing, councilmember Fowler would not be participating. And she recognizes that. She, she was not asking us to rush in order for her to participate. She recognizes the difficulty in rushing.
I advocated for an earlier appointment. The 18th seemed earliest, but we're going to be making CIP decisions by August. And I really think it's important to have someone who knows the roads, knows the parks, knows their district during that discussion to make sure the rest of the money gets allocated with equity.
O2 asks, Monday, June 12th, anytime after 1:00, and Tuesday, July 25th, regular 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Do those not work for anybody?
I'll be out of town on the 12th, but I'll try to participate remotely.
Is the ninth better for you?
It is.
But we only have a two hour gap on the ninth that works for anybody, right?
Yeah.
And we can't guarantee we'll have what we need.
And we might not have the numbers.
Okay. Yeah. I'll, I'll look at the times, but I, I think I can participate remotely for at least part of the meeting.
I would be out of town on the ninth, but could participate remotely. My preference would be the 12th.
I can do either.
And I prefer the 12th, not the ninth.
Okay, Councilmember Warren, will you just get us, get back to us with your availability on the 12th?
Yep.
All right.
Right. And then the 25th.
Works for me.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilors, do you want to end the meeting here? Or, everyone's leaving. Okay. We just, when's our next unresolved issues discussion?
On Tuesday, the 6th. There's a couple, I think there were one or two more departments left. CIP, we'll have an initial discussion on CIP and then the next unresolved issues discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.